Okay, it is nine, 9:34, and I'm going to call this, this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to order. We have a full house. I know we'll have a lot of off-agenda public comment, and thank you all for being here in chambers. I turn to our clerk to open the meeting and call the roll and read the statement.
Okay, good morning, Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy. Or, excuse me, Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
And you have a quorum. And Supervisor Kennedy will just be a few minutes late. He's taking public transportation today. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on the Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, January 27th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. In compliance with the directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the meeting will be livestream and open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing of face coverings, mask or shield is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it is not required. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. The chairperson may increase or decrease the time allocation as the schedule permits. Each person, each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. Providing your contact information is optional whether you're in person or making it telephonically. To make a comment in person, fill out a speaker request form and hand it to Clerk Staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda item or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak, and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. To make a comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda or off-agenda item. Clerk Staff will transfer each caller into the meeting. You may be on hold for an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comments will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see Clerk Staff for assistance or contact the Clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd ask Supervisor Serna, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you for all participating in that. I was just, I'd just like to make a few follow-up comments on the clerk statement that you heard. This year, we are going back to two minutes for public comment, and our clerk will be administering the public comments. And as you get close to the two minutes, the clerk will give you a notice, whether you're here in person or on the phone, to please wrap up the comments, and then we'll, we're going to stick to that two-minute timeframe. We have a lot of folks here in chambers to give public comment, and thank you very much for being here and participating in the process. What I would, what I would ask is, obviously, keep your comments to a maximum of two minutes, but if you're just, if you're just going to, if you can also just offer your name, who you represent, and where you stand on an issue as well. You don't, you don't have to take, obviously, the whole two minutes. You could also say, you know, I echo what the previous speaker said. You can refer to them as well. And the other thing, in terms of, as we start, we're going to be starting here in a moment with off-agenda public comment, which I think that's what most of the people are here to talk about. After, I'm going to keep the queue open for 30 minutes once we start the public comment, and then shut it off for public comment for off-agenda. Is that, look, my county council, is that okay? We can do that after 30 minutes. So that's, so let's keep track of that. Okay, and with that, please, we'll go to our first item.
Okay. Your first item is the public comments relating to matters not on the posted agenda. So let me bring up that screen.
And, and one more thing before Madam Clerk calls, start calls, calling the speakers up, is this is intended for items that are, as it, as it says, not on the posted agenda. So if a speaker comes up and they start talking about something that is specifically related to something that is agendized for later, then either the clerk or I, or I will remind the speaker of that and ask them to hold their comments until the more appropriate time for that specific agenda item. And I hope that, hope that makes sense. And ask my colleagues as well if that is happening, and for some reason I'm not catching it, or Madam Clerk is not catching it, please bring that to our attention. So with that, please, start with the public comments.
Mr. Chair, may I make a suggestion? As it stands right now, we do have 27 speakers. We have a few in the queue, and I would like to make a recommendation that you would just narrow that down to one minute. That way, everyone would more likely have a chance to make a comment.
And is that just in-person?
Right now, you have 27 that are signed up to speak, and then we do have about three or four on the phone line.
And we'll probably have more of that.
Yeah.
I'm going to start with just two minutes. Let's keep it for two minutes.
Okay.
For now. With the, again, encouraging folks to try to keep your comments shorter so we can get to the rest of the agenda items for the day. Thank you.
Okay, are you ready for me to call the first?
Yes.
All right. If, Sheree Utterback?
Good morning. My name is Sheree Utterback, and I am currently IHSS caregiver. I started this when I was 15 years old, taking care of my grandma. For, she had four-stage lung cancer, and it hit me hard because I now care for a person that is legally blind. All I wanted to say, and this comes from the heart, it is hard to live in California right now, with the wages going down and paying rent. I, I'm afraid I won't be able to afford my rent in a few months if the wages don't go up. Just think about that, please. Thank you.
Thank you. And Susan Goodban. And if you see your name on the list, if you could just start lining up, that would be great.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Susan Goodban, and I've been an IHSS care provider for six years. Excuse me. I'm currently caring for an elderly woman who has heart issues and diabetes. Because of the IHSS program, she's able to stay in her home while receiving one-on-one excellent care for her specific health issues. Excuse me. Experts and advocates have proven the IHSS program ultimately saves the public money by keeping the residents in the home. Our current income makes it difficult to scrape by with the rising costs for rent, gas, and groceries. People with disabilities who rely on the program say the low wages for their, their workers make it difficult to find and retain IHSS workers to keep their remaining in their homes. I say it's time for $20 an hour. Thank you.
Thank you. And so now we have Russell Rawlings.
Russell, would you like?
Sure, that would be great.
Good morning, Russell. It's been a long time. Nice to see you.
Good morning, Supervisors. I am very happy to be here. My name is Russell Rawlings. I am an Oak Park resident and the California Community Organizer, California Education Organizer at Hand in Hand, the Domestic Employers Network. We are an organization of member employers that are dedicated to improving conditions for domestic workers, and we facilitate a space known as the Long-Term Supports and Services, or LTSS, for all grassroots coalition led by members who believe that we need long-term care options that support people in community. And as part of that, we have committed ourselves to supporting the effort for Time for 20 because we know that in-home supportive services is a key part of the system that allows people to stay in their homes and age in place with dignity. And right now, the IHSS system is experiencing a crisis. The wages are simply not keeping up with the pace of accelerating costs of living throughout the state, particularly in Sacramento. And many people that I have spoken with are struggling to find people to help them. I am here because I am supported by my IHSS worker, who you may hear from shortly, but I really want to reiterate just the importance of this program, keeping people out of institutions where the costs are actually higher to support people. So this is a very important issue. It's also important to understand that during the pandemic, all of these issues were exacerbated. Thank you for your consideration.
And now we have Stephen Payan.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Stephen Payan. I'm here, I woke up today on my sister's couch. I mean, I'm in between houses. My father recently passed away, so I moved from Sacramento to Woodland. I'm an IHSS worker. I've been here for three years, working with Caesar Sobran, who suffers from cerebral palsy, who struggles every day just to get by. So, and with my father passing away, I'm going to have to put my brother on IHSS as well, so it's struggle for, for my mom to take care of him. He has Asperger's Syndrome. And within the three years that I've been working with Caesar, I've learned a lot about how much he struggles. I, I care for him every day when I'm at work, from brushing his teeth to helping him get ready, normal, normal things. And it's a struggle. I mean, a lot of our coworkers, they have a lot of, a lot of struggles maintaining people just basic, basic survival. You know, it's like, it's, it's hard mentally for, for people to get by with, with not, with not enough, because like, the retention rate with inside, for care providers is a constant revolving door. People coming in, and then people lose that connection, lose that bond, and who knows what they suffer with mentally because they have to get new people in their life, constantly going inside their personal space, helping them out, learning them. So then they have to continuously, like, with the disability, everyone has to have those exchanges, so it's, it's really hard on them. It's like hard on me also too, because like, I just have to admit to Caesar, who I've been caring for like a brother, I take him everywhere, that I might have to leave too, because now that I have moved, and I might have to take care of my, my brother full-time with my other families. But as a full-time single father, I, I looked up, up the statistic, MIT's living wages here in Sacramento. For someone with no children, the living wage would be $19.48. For someone living in Sacramento...
You have 15 seconds.
Oh, sorry. One adult would be $39.51. So I don't think asking for $20 is too much. My time is up, but thank you.
Thank you. And now we have Suzette Miller.
Hi, my name is Suzette Miller. Thank you for being here today. I just want to say that it is hard to have a, earn a good living out there today. It's just a cold world out there. Good wages and good benefits, having a union is just an awesome thing for encouragement for a job. My husband and I were homeless, and now it, you know, with this job, I mean, he takes care of everything at home, and me going out and working and having clients, it's, it's encouragement in today's world, you know? I come off of the street, and I don't want to go back out there. And I just, I've been working this job since May of 2020, and I believe that there is a whole lot of goodness in there to it. And I believe it's time for 20. You know, I believe that if, if, if you give us 20, then we're, we're more encouraged to, to, you know, work and, you know, keep ends meet. Thank you.
Congratulations to you.
Ryan Harris?
You can't stand too long, so that's why I wasn't in line. Never took care of me on it. Yes, I am. All right, so my name is Ryan, and I represent Fairness. Last year, I was in here a lot, well, I've been in here a lot over the years, and a lot of people have asked me, Ryan, if you're on camera, why don't you do something about your hair? And the answer is simple. It's how God made me. That's why I'm here. I'm a black man, and I intend, as I am, to show you that there's nothing to be afraid of. That's, yeah, that's why I look this way today. And in the past meetings, I watch over the past meetings when I've been here, and it's kind of sickening that, feel like I have to come here to humor you guys just to listen to my situation. Like, I'm walking on eggshells with people who are sworn to help. And the reason I feel like I have to humor you is to be, avoid being labeled as a angry black man for bringing you serious problems. And if you don't believe me, you guys have gotten Ethan's email that he wrote about me, claiming that I was an angry black man and was trying to do all types of obscenities at work, which was complete lies, and you guys did nothing. Oh, wait, you guys promoted him. I'm sorry. When I brought this to you, Kenny Patrick, you instructed me to do things that led me to the police getting called on me. Phil, you completely ignored me. Sue, you humiliated me, mocked me, and you lied on camera multiple times to cover it. If you would like to know when, I'll happily replay it for you. And Rich, you gave me false promises, man. Still waiting on that call back, still waiting on that meeting. And you ignore your district, Rich. I don't know if you saw some of these pictures that were up here. Right now, it's showing all the times that I requested and filled out the paperwork to see you guys and never heard anything back. But if you saw some of the pictures that popped up, you might recognize the area. That's the church where the man killed his three daughters, killed his son. You said you really care about that area. Have you seen that area lately? Have you been by that area? There's always trash outside that church.
You have about 10 seconds.
There's always graffiti on, on the fence. Do you really care, or do you just care when that happened? And I know Don's, or, to the new Pat Hume, I know you haven't done anything with me yet. I'm just now meeting you, but you did send out an email.
Ryan, you are pastor time, so I'm going to end the time out.
All right. You did send out an email saying the picture's worth a thousand words.
Thank you for your comments.
That's why I put these pictures of this hurt district up here for you. And Don, wherever you're at.
Congratulations, man. And now that your schedule's free, maybe you can be my mentor. Thank you.
All right, Madeline Clark?
Thank you. Thank you for hearing me today. I'm here with SEIU 2015, and I'm just here to encourage and hopefully plead you guys to consider the $20 an hour pay raise. The cost of living is becoming outrageous, and it's not, it's not equal. Like, the wages are not going up as fast as the cost of living is. And as a single mom and a caregiver, it's becoming more and more difficult to be able to continue in this line of work. And I've devoted my life to the care of people and the betterment of my community, and it's becoming almost impossible to survive to do so anymore. So that's all that I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Dan Aderhal.
I'm going to try to make this quick as possible. Board Supervisors, you guys were all here in July. You guys all promised American Home School members, we're going to hear that they can stay on the American River Parkway, 20 hours bike trail, until homes are provided for them, their pets. They all were here. They all, all talked to you guys. You guys all promised some of this, okay? Now, I've helped you guys with a big problem you guys were stuck with, the pets and the homeless people getting a home. I got them into a home. Problem is, we got on the waiting list right now, and all their pets. So it's a win-win for everybody. It's SHRA Project Housing. I got them all on the waiting list for the housing. Now, the thing is, I'm against right now, like, right now, I just got informed that my crew members' tents are being destroyed right now on the American River Parkway as we speak. So that's why my crew members are not here to talk to you right now. You guys are, they're destroying their tents right now. Why, why is this happening? Why can't they just, why can't they just move on the other side of the parkway right there and be in peace? I already told my crew members to move off the, off the tree area, because I told them they're not, not to leave the parkway, period. They could, they could stay over on the other side where the trees are not at. And now, also, I found out, right after you guys gave them a 48-hour notice, SAC picks it up, and other groups, or members, and other group members came down and destroyed half my members' tents the next day on the parkways. I need to know, because we're going to be doing a lawsuit, and this is not a joke. People are going to find out I'm not kidding no more. We need to know if Sacramento County was, gave them permission or not to do this, because, or they acted on their own, because this was a malicious attack against my American River Homes crew while we're out cleaning, saving the American River Parkway, their camps and everything, and belongings are being destroyed. And that is just not right. And right now, I'm not kidding, we're going to be doing lawsuits because people are doing this because this is against their civil rights. This shouldn't be happening. The 48-hour notice we're honoring, we got the crew members on the other side right there, Phil Serna, we got them out of the way. But we just need to know, if you guys still backing us up, thank you.
You still have 15 seconds. You still have 15 seconds. Okay. Jesus Figueroa Quechua, is that, did I say that right? Okay. That's the lowest it'll go.
Good morning to everyone. Good morning to all the head of Sacramento County. I'm sorry, but I'm kind of nervous for a minute. So first of all, I want to say thank you for having me here. We are here for the same cause. But first of all, my name is Jesus Figueroa Quechua. I am not American. I'm from Central America. But I've been living here for many years. What brought me into this situation? When I brought my mother here, she had an accident, and she fell in my house, and she was in UC Davis. And then they wanted to put her in a nursing home, and I refused for my mother to go to a nursing home, and I take care of my mother. So I understand what all these members are going through. I'm a nursing home worker at this moment. They talking about $20 an hour, but yes, be or not choose for a minute. The rent is going high every year. If your rent go high every year, $150, and your income is not going as high as that, how kind of life we expecting to have? We need to live with dignity. We taking care of people who are ill, you know? So we need to have a quality life. So that, this is the reason why we here this morning. So please, hear us. We vote for you guys to be in this, on your share. So listen to our cause, be in our situation. We can be taking care of your mothers, your daughters, anybody, you know? I'm a mom. My son is in college. I'm a full-time student, and I got two jobs. Do you think I got eight hours to sleep? No, I don't. After I leave this meeting, I have to drive to Reading to go to my class. And then from there, I leave from Reading about 7 o'clock. I have to drive to Auburn for my night job, and I come home and sleep a couple of hours and do my homework.
Ms. Jesus, you have 10 minutes, 10 seconds.
This is my routine every day. And my rent go up every, every year. I pay $2,000 for rent. My income doesn't go high that much. So please, listen to us.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Be on our shoes. Okay? We need to live with dignity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Carl Vinson. Carl Vinson?
Good morning, Board Supervisor. How y'all doing? My name is Carl Vinson. I'm from Solano County. I represent local 2015 SEIU. And I'm also, I am associate member/volunteer of the union in our county. And I have one question. Do you value human life more than your possessions? Do you understand the type of work that we do here? And I'm a former, I'm a former caregiver, and I'm also, the reality of it, I'm a former caregiver because I find it to where I'm on the Solano County IHSS Public Authority Advisor Committee because I'm a liaison between the client and who, and my brothers and sisters in this audience. So I know what it is because I've done the work. I've seen the conflict of interests. I've seen things that you wouldn't even imagine. We go through a lot being caregivers. And my question is, with the rise of inflation, food, housing, homelessness in this country, and in California, and the country's fourth highest economy in the country, how we have so much debt? So I just want to make sure that y'all adhere to what we're saying, to where we think $20 and up is sufficient or more, based on economics, associate status of everybody that's here. And I want to make sure I put this plain. I am a community leader in my county, all seven cities in Solano County, and I'm also a community leader here in California. And you're probably going to see me more than times would allow me to be here, but when you see me, understand this. I'll come with respect, I'll come with authority, and I come with belief of us getting the things done. So our brothers and sisters...
You have about 10 seconds.
Yes, thank you. So our brothers and sisters can get the things that they need to take care of their clients, because y'all going to get old one day, and you need to take care of you. Thank you, and God bless.
Okay, Ms. Alicia Lee, did I say that right? Or Alicia Lee?
Hi, my name is Alicia Lee. I'm here, obviously, from SEIU. I believe this is the third time I've been here to speak since our contract has expired. And obviously, like he just said, you guys are very aware of the inflations that are happening out here. And I think that we are being very generous to only ask you for $20 an hour. And when I look into life, you know, I look at the fact that fast-food workers just got a pathway to $22, and we are dealing with people's lives out here. And we're asking for some dignity and respect, because it's almost like you guys sit back there and take this as a game. It's not. You know, these people need care, you know, and we need to live. It is considered a job to us, you know? But to make $16 an hour on a job with your rent, your food bill, your gas bill, you know, you can't even buy clothes to put on your back. Now, I'm not coming in here to disrespect the homeless and to help that you give them in any kind of way, because they deserve that, okay? But if you think your homeless population is bad now, if you don't start doing something about these wages, we all going to be out there. And then what's going to happen? This is supposed to be the richest company, country in the world. So it's really mind-bothering, you know, to sit here and see you guys not do anything about it. I really hope today, really sink in, because it needs to, because there's no reason that we should still be coming back here to ask for $20 an hour. Thank you.
Thank you. Jude, is it Equodike? Did I say that right?
Right. Hi, good morning. My name is Jude Equodike. I'm an IHSS provider. I take care of my son. He's five years old. He's autistic, and he has AD/HD, and he also engages in self-injurious behavior. Since I've been doing this, I've been doing this for about three years now, but I became an IHSS provider in the last 10, 10 months. Since I've been doing this, I've come to appreciate, you know, all the work that other people do. If I had not done this, I would have no idea of the challenges that they go through. $16 an hour is grossly inadequate. It's grossly inadequate. I used to have a job where I was salaried, had bonus at the end of the year, and I had great benefits. But I had to leave that to prioritize, you know, the care of my son. Please, I'm begging you. I plead with you. Look at all these people here. Some of us have college students. I have college students. I have some that are college-bound. $16 an hour. How do we make it? I have property taxes to pay. I have mortgage to pay. The taxes we pay accrue to the county. Please, I am begging you to have a favorable review of the wage of these caregivers. We are taking care of people who cannot take care of themselves. Each, each should touch each and every one of you. We are members of this community. I have lived here for 33 years. I am begging you. The taxes we pay come back to the county. We pay sales tax, property tax, and all the, all the other kinds of taxes. We cannot survive on $16. How do I pay for college with $16 an hour? It is grossly inadequate. I'm begging you to find it in your hearts. We are your neighbors. We are your brothers. We are your sisters. Please help us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rachel Gonzalez?
Good morning. My name is Rachel Gonzalez, and I am here representing IHSS and SEIU, local 2015. I'd like to talk about our economy, fourth, fourth, largest in the world. The world. How do we define our society? By the way that we take care of the least among us. The distance between the haves and the have-nots is increasing exponentially. We have a federal minimum wage of $7.25. Who can survive on that? We can't survive on 16. We're living in California. You give us a, a minimum wage of $15, we still, 40 hours a week, do the math. Do the math. Do the math. It is math, ladies and gentlemen. And guess what? We can't strike. That's why people who give out hamburgers make more than we do. Because we can't strike. Who are we gonna strike? We're walking out on our family members, Mr. Kennedy. We're walking out on our, our sick in this nation. And I would like to clarify what a couple of my brothers and sisters said. This is not inflation. This is greedflation. Our corporations are showing up with 90% profits, 300 times what they've done pre-pandemic. Somebody's making money, but we're not. We cannot afford to live. $20 isn't enough. And by the time we get that 20, it'll be just like making 16. It's unacceptable. You are human beings. We are human beings. If we stop doing our job, this, our little Sacramento is gonna fall apart. You're gonna see people all lined up along the river banks.
You have about five seconds, almost.
Please, I'm on the bargaining committee. We're fighting for our money. Give it to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Andrea Henson?
Let me bring that down. Yes. As low as I can get. As low as you can get it. That's right.
Okay.
And go and pull, pull both microphones together if you can. That increases. That's great.
Ooh, okay. Good morning. My name is Andrea Henson and I am a criminal defense and civil rights attorney here in Sacramento. I'm here to, I've talked to you before, but I help the homeless because it's right. So I have a story. I had a gentleman that my legal assistant brought to me. I am with Mouses Criminal Defense and all of us are dedicated to helping the homeless. So I've come here to talk about different individuals that I've helped. This one gentleman was brought to me, Timothy Hughes, African-American elderly vet, veteran. He lives in a cardboard box right over here behind J Street in a little alleyway. And so I spoke with him because he wants to be housed. And what I will do is a sort of triage. This is not my job, but all of you know, because you've given so much money to 211 and these other organizations, what they're supposed to do. Are you a vet? Do you have benefits? Are you disabled, et cetera? He has no benefits. He does have his VA card. He's been told by everyone, go to Mather, but no one's provided him with the voucher. So he has absolutely no benefits, no telephone at all, no electricity. He got walking pneumonia from being out in the storms. Let's fast forward. So what do I do? What, what a typical representative would do? I called 211. They put me on hold. I was the one who signed him up for benefits. I was the one who called Mather. Each and every time, every person put a sort of a stumbling block that could have been overcome by them asking simply, are you homeless? Because what that means is like Mr. Hughes, they would know that this person doesn't have electricity, they more than likely don't have a phone that can stay charged for two and a half hours, et cetera. It's my office that's doing it. So now I'm just going to ask you to demand accountability of your contractors, make these providers that Sacramento County has contracts with, explain their metrics to you, and incorporate those demands of what meaningful outreach and help means.
Ms. Andrea, you've reached your time.
Into the requests for proposals and quotes from these contractors.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Andrea.
Because all the money you're spending is not working.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Supervisor.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Henson. Emily Halcon, our Director of Homeless Initiatives is in the audience here today. And I saw her taking out her pen and taking some notes. The gentleman that you cited that is here that wants housing near or on J Street, this is the district that I represent. So I'm going to encourage you and respectfully request that perhaps you meet with Ms. Halcon in back of chambers, get her card, and we see if we can't get this gentleman the housing that you say he is searching for.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ron Gannon?
Good morning. Good morning, board of supervisors. I just would like to stress how important it is for in-home service support system, for those ladies who come to our homes and cleans our house. We are, I'm a, me and my family are a recipient of the in-home support services. We have a lady who comes to our house and cleans our bathrooms, cleans our showers, mops our floors, vacuums our carpet. My house, if it's not for, for her, I don't know if it's gonna be a livable house. My, my wife has been battling breast cancer for the last three years. And I hope none of the ladies or men ever have something to do with, with the breast cancer. But for that, that lady, I mean, really, whatever she gets, I don't think is enough. Okay? We're talking about like 16 bucks an hour for a lady who, who is willing really to leave his, her family and goes to someone's house and clean their bathrooms and cleans their showers and mop their floors, unless she really needs it very bad to support her family. And 16 bucks won't even buy a Big Mac at McDonald's. Even now, if you work, if she works at McDonald's, she'll get $22 an hour. She doesn't have to go to someone's house and it cleans her bathrooms. So I would really stress on you, board of supervisors, to take care of that issue and help them as much as possible so they could support their family because they're not doing that except because they want to support their families and help their kids and, and. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mark Kirk, before we get to the next one. So it's, we've been on this for 30 minutes. Let's, let's close the queue for future either callers or in person. Thank you.
Mr. Marcus McKay?
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Marcus McCray. I'm the organizing director for SEIU Local 2015. So I represent our members that work in skilled nursing, assisted living, and IHSS home care. In Sacramento County, our IHSS workers are 30,000 strong. We're the largest bargaining unit in this county. We provide care to the members of our community that have the same challenges that everyone else in our community and our, and our families does. So that's, if that's Down Syndrome, dementia, if it's strokes, if it's autism, everything in between. And the work that we do tirelessly allows seniors to live their longest, best lives. It allows people with disabilities to have dignity in the community and live independently and not institutionalized. IHSS workers aren't doctors, but we do the most important healthcare work that there is, which is preventative work. And we're your partners in keeping Sacramento County residents healthy and safe, not just in a feel-good way, but in a real financial way as well. When I say that, what I mean is that in-home care is half the cost of institutional care. And every time we keep someone out of the emergency room, that's $4,000 that we can spend on something else in the community. So with 36,000 consumers in this county, let's do the math about the value that this program has, not just in a feel-good way, but in a financial way. We hope, as we care for Sacramento, that you will be partners with us in taking care of care providers. IHSS workers just started making $16.50 three weeks ago. And with skyrocketing gas, groceries, and housing, it's, it's a poverty wage. It's time for 20. It's time for caregivers that do the, who care the most for the vulnerable in our community to be able to take care of themselves as well.
You have about 10 seconds.
It's time for majority women, head of household people, to be able to keep, keep up with costs themselves and for a real investment in senior and care for people with disabilities.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning. My name is Christina Alvarez. I'm an organizer here in Sacramento with SEIU USWW. We represent essential workers, janitors, security officers all across the state. And we are here in support of the IHSS workers who, despite this pandemic, despite any change in working conditions, despite changes in rent, the cost of living, the increase of groceries, continue to care for the most needy elderly children, mothers, fathers, and are still trying to survive, trying to pay rent, support, and live with dignity. Survival is real. Health is real. Homelessness is real. So yes, we are demanding that you do the right thing. Support the Time for 20. Support IHSS workers. Support dignity. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Sue Lockwood. Sue Lockwood. Roberta Sue Lockwood. Okay, next we have Sam.
I almost left.
Oh, okay. All right.
Oh my. First I have a quick question. Who is earning on social security? I'm not, thank God. I get 1,200 a month and I'm a 30-year veteran of the force. Figure that out.
Please, ma'am, please come down to the microphone. We need to start your timer.
Do I need the microphone? Okay.
We all need to, we all want to hear your comments.
Well, I just said them. Okay, so I'm sure everybody's making at least 20,000 a year, single here, right? 19C? Well, where's the money? That's all I have to say.
Thank you for sticking around.
Samuel Flores? If I could have the clerk's office refresh the screen, please. Samuel Flores?
Yeah. How's it going, y'all? My name is Samuel Flores. I'm a representative with SEIU 2015, organizer one with SEIU 2015. So on a daily basis, I'm working with IHSS providers, right? On a daily basis, I, I see that, you know, there's many in poverty. With a wage of $16 an hour, the providers that I represent struggle to make ends meet, having to work multiple jobs simply to, to afford rent and some deal, some meals a day. Many are living paycheck to paycheck. Imagine being a caregiver, working, working overtime. These are folks who are wiping people's behinds, showering them, cooking, cleaning, et cetera, ensuring that an entire human being, you know, that they stay alive, that they can survive. Meanwhile, at the same time, they have to worry about not being able to cover rent, utilities, gas, et cetera. And so, you know, these are providers that are doing the vital services of ensuring that elderly and disabled folks are taken care of. But at the same time, when we say that $16.50 is enough for them, when we say that they don't deserve retirement benefits, we're saying that when they're elderly and disabled, that, that they're on their own, basically, that we're not gonna take care of them. And that, that's not okay. Our contract has inspired, has expired. And I'm here in good faith, you know? I, I want to see good results, not, not just here to bash y'all. Our, our contract has expired and there are over 28,000 IHSS providers that are, that are vulnerable, when they're already taking care of a vulnerable population. So I ask that you bargain in good faith and, and support our fight for a living wage. You know, I, I've been told by IHSS providers that, that their greatest ingredient in care that they give is love. And so I'm asking that you show providers love too and, and help them in their fight for 20. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have Robert Copeland.
Hi, we need stronger tenant protections here in Sacramento County because there's a lot of abusive landlords threatening their tenants with eviction or just harassing them. And also, I agree with SEIU 2015 because they make a lot of good points about rent going up, but their wages are not. Thank you.
Now we have Barbara Sardison. If we could get a refresh on the screen, please.
Hello, my name is Barbara Sardison and I'm a recipient of the IHSS program. And just a few words, I feel that they deserve more than what they're asking for just because of my experience with my provider. And I've only been in the program about nine months. I wish I'd known about it years ago, but here I am. And it's, it's just a really great program and they deserve more than what they're getting. Everybody is pretty much saying the same thing about the cost of living and the inflation. And we can all relate to that. So my last words are that my provider is a gem and she's one of a kind and I love her because she's got such a heart for us. And if I could clone her, I would. And I've told that to some of my relatives and friends because I'm sure there's more dislike. And she has been a blessing to me and is very helpful in my life. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Good morning, Giovanna Fajardo with ACE, the Alliance of Californians for Community Empowerment. We have a couple tenants here and some on cue. We've met with Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Desmond's office already, but we're here pushing around anti-harassment. With COVID, we've seen the rents got way too damn high. We've seen families get kicked out on the streets. But one thing that we haven't been talking about in Sacramento is the harassment. The verbal, the physical threats. We've had tenants who have been called services on them because negligence of their grandchildren, which is lie. We've had property managers break into the homes. We've had physical threats. Personally, my staff have had to call sheriff on probably five occasions over the last six months for physical threats that they put on our staff and our tenants we are working with. We're having tenants living in conditions without roof, with mold, getting sick. And they're getting these threats because they know if they evict these families, that they'll get another family in there because there's a waiting list, because there's people not finding enough housing. And so what we need to do right now is make sure that the more we wait, the more families are gonna be on the street, the more families that are being physically harmed or mentally issued. We have two families that their children have been having suicidal thoughts and issue from the harassment from the property managers. We have tenants that are, you know, with COVID, it's been such a mental health issue, but add to that the stress of them threatening you outside of your home all weekend, having to put video cameras because of the afraid of the staff that work in the building that you live in, not wanting to leave your children home because even though they're grown in high school, the threats that they've been given.
Giovanna, you have about 10 seconds.
So we will continue to try to reach out to your offices and share these stories. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Giovanna, wait, we're not gonna get into discussion about something that's not on the agenda, you realize that. But I just want you to know, we are working on exactly what you're asking for. Okay? Thank you.
And now we have Isabel Areola?
Yes, thank you. Good morning. So many wonderful things have been said. And I have three, three things I want to talk about and I'm hoping I can get them in two minutes. Diamonds, dominoes, and disability. I'm Isabel Areola. I work at Resources for Independent Living. And on a daily basis, we get calls and calls and calls about people's different barriers to being successful, to having a fulfilling life. Diamonds. When you have a system like IHSS, there's a lot of ways to improve upon it. There's a lot of ways to use it, to make it an asset and shape it the way you need it to look. Because what you get from something like IHSS is not just people working. You get a more functioning system. The domino effect. Disability. What do you lose when you have a disability? Dignity has been spoken about, but you also lose voice and you also lose choice. And the privilege of speaking your mind, of having your choice, is an incomparable one. I got here today because of helpful people, literally. The Uber driver helped me get from the door of the car to the steps. And then Sue, who you met earlier, helped me from the steps to the door. And then Russ helped me from the door and then from my seat to here. I got more help. If it isn't for kindness, we can't make the system work. And if we treat kindness like an obligation and we pay it like an obligation, that's all we're gonna get. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Antoinette Sadler? Antoinette Sadler? Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Hi, my name is Antoinette Sadler. I'm an organizer with ACE. And so like Giovanna said, we're here to push you all and ask for an anti-harassment ordinance to be passed here in Sacramento. So many of the tenants that we talked to, going out into communities, folks that are coming to us for help, they're experiencing things like utilities being shut off, lack of repairs not being done in their apartment. Again, how we talked about verbal and physical threats and sometimes going beyond a threat, actually like being physically assaulted by these landlords. And so again, you know, like we're just here to ask, I know you said it's not on the agenda and it's a conversation that we're going to have later down the line, but just to make sure that, you know, the rest of the team here knows that this is something that's imperative to not just Sacramento, of course, like it's something we would love to see statewide or nationwide, but as of right now, Sacramento is imperative that you all pass something as an anti-harassment ordinance to really, really protect these tenants. Because it goes from, you know, a lot of folks here are saying they're going to be dealing with being houseless or just like, all of this, again, is a domino effect. And so if you have all these protections in place, like the more you'll be able to protect your community and the people who put you in your seats to begin with, you get your check from the community. So that should be the same community that you're willing to stand up and protect. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Sarah Declo. Ms. Sarah Declo? Okay, take your time.
Hi, my name is Sarah. I wanted to give you a little bit about my story. I was attending Sac State and I thought that I was in good health. And then I graduated from Sac State as a marriage and family therapist, was working three years in my career. And then I got a paid job and within six months, I had a massive stroke. I was home alone and I could not call for help. Laid in that bed for 12 hours. I couldn't figure out how to get out of my apartment, couldn't figure out how to use the phone. The next morning, I was able to call my sister because she was on the first contact. I found the contacts, called her, and she says to me, "Call 911." And I'm like, I freaked out because I had been trying all night to call 911. Anyway, let's see, I wrote, I wrote some stuff down. So, so when that blood clot hit my brain, I lost everything. Within 60 seconds, my entire career that I went to college for 12 years was gone. Okay? And, and I have a blood disorder, so my body randomly makes blood clots. So I keep having strokes and heart attacks and seizures. I'm pretty much a walking time bomb. Now, my family, they helped for about a month, but they all work. So I ended up having to get an I H S worker to come in and care for me. And, let's see. And without my I H S worker, I would be lost. Because in the beginning, my doctor said I could put toast in the toaster. But even today, I can't cook because I'll leave the stove on and you don't want me leaving the stove on. You don't want anyone leaving the stove on. But I wanted to say that, you know, the I H S workers, what they do for me is, well, they do everything.
Ma'am, I'm going to have to cut your comments off because you're 21 seconds past.
Okay.
Okay?
I just wanted to say what happened to me could happen to you and you want to make sure your I H S worker gets the pay that they deserve. And I thank you so much for listening to me, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry I had to do that. Okay. Mr. Jefferson McGee will be making the comment on behalf of Candelaria and Estella to interpret their message for them, okay? This is as a matter of interpretation.
My name is Jefferson McGee. I'm with ACE, Alliance of Californians for Community Empowerment. ACE, we are advocating for tenants in the Sacramento area. This anti-harassment ordinance is very important. It's important just not for the rental, the renter community, but it's important for the community as a whole. I hear reports that these landlords and their staff are very aggressive towards people, tenants. And these people are living in this situation where the landlord can come out, just a bully. And the biggest thing is, what we hear is, especially in the Latino community, is when they call the sheriffs, the sheriff comes out and typically, they don't speak the language. And the sheriff, he's in a bad position to have to balance what's going on. So we really need to clamp down on these landlords. You know, it's kind of like if your mortgage holder was at your door threatening you, it would be a very serious problem. And this is a very serious problem to tenants in our community. So not only should we just do an anti-harassment ordinance, we should make it strong because this type of behavior should be unacceptable in our society. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comments inside of chambers and I'm going to move to the phones now. So I will ask clerk staff to transfer the first caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Yes, my name is Keisha Unger. I'm calling due to the landlord harassment ordinance. And I just want to say that, you know, I've been harassed since moving December 31st. I just received an email two days ago, was even harassed at a eviction court, asking when I'm a femme, I've had worked as sheriff and how long is it going to take you? I just received the email two days ago. I feel like I shouldn't be harassed, being I'm trying to find a place to lay my head. The harassment keeps continuing from landlords and I just feel it's not right. Thank you for your time and have a good day.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Monica Madrid. I am a community organizer with Sacramento ACE, mostly working with tenants out in South Sacramento and unincorporated. And I would like to thank Supervisor Kennedy for his support on passing, on us trying to pass a tenant anti-harassment policy. But we would like to see this go, this process go a little bit faster since, you know, tenants are getting threatened with immigration, they're still living in unhabitable living conditions. And we really want to make sure that these tenants in South Sacramento, particularly Black and Latino, tenants of color who are suffering from these bad living conditions and harassment, and we want to make sure that we can get this passed. So I really hope that, you know, the other supervisors, we have meetings with them and we can get their support as well. And we look forward to seeing this agendized soon. And thank you so much and congratulations to the new elected supervisor. I actually live in your district and used to live in, and live in your council district when you were a council member, so congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Sharon Duchessy. I'm an I H S S provider. I'm also part of the elected board for Sacramento County. I wanted to thank you for your time, for allowing me this time to speak about the importance of the I H S S contract that we're currently bargaining for. As I said, my name is Sharon. I've been taking care of my clients since 2009. I had to make the greatest, the greatest decision I ever had to make was whether to continue my career or to take care of my client. I made the decision to take care of my client because I couldn't work 13 hours a day and continuously take him to doctor's appointments and ER appointments because there was no one there to take care of him. Because of his disability, I have to do certain things that take time. A big one is, when I talk to his doctors, is giving him fresh fruits and vegetables. This is why the increase in our pay rate needs to be increased to at least $20 an hour because buying fresh fruits and vegetables right now is ridiculous. Even a gallon of milk is $4 a gallon. And doing it on the, on the pay rate that we have right now is ridiculous. I have to try and buy things on sale and in season, which is next to, which is next to impossible right now. So I'm having to buy canned, canned fruit and vegetables so that he can eat a healthy, as healthy as his nutritionist wants him to be. And this is, a lot of this has to do with his diabetes and gout. This is not just my client that has to deal with this, this is everybody, all the purple shirts you see in your, in your galley right now. This is something we all have to deal with, along with rent and utilities. Everything is going up, but our, our pay is stagnant and we need to make sure that our pay increases with inflation.
Ma'am, you have five seconds.
Okay. I want to thank you very much for your time and you guys have a lovely day and please take into consideration everything everybody has said. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your call. Alrighty, next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Katie Savin and I'm a disabled Sacramentoan living in Land Park. I'm a member of Hand in Hand and a social work faculty member at University of the Pacific. I'm calling today with, in solidarity with I H S S providers and recipients to support the Time for 20 campaign. When we underpay and devalue our I H S S providers, we create a whole cascade of additional and costly social problems. Sacramento's disabled and elder communities face a care crisis, making us more likely to enter expensive institutions like hospitals and nursing facilities. We see in existing research, as well as in the personal testimonies of many of those here today, that underpaid providers are more likely to live precarious lives facing food insecurity and housing insecurity, both of which lead to increased chronic health issues and ultimately increase burden on an already taxed health and social service system. Here in Sacramento County, as you've heard, you can earn more than an I H S S provider and receive health benefits in a number of ways by being a warehouse team member at Cross Street Outlet, or cashier at Nugget, or dishwasher at Applebee's, or really almost any entry-level position. So I want to ask you, what message do you think that sends to disabled people and those who care for us about the value of our lives? I encourage you to see the tremendous opportunity you have today to improve the lives of many people in Sacramento's most vulnerable communities, to prevent further institutionalization and homelessness, and to value the lives of Sacramento's elders and people with disabilities and their dedicated care workers by raising I H S S provider wages to at least $20. It's time for 20. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have three callers left and so if you could transfer the call. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Yes, my name is Marie Hoffman and I am a member of the Alliance of Californians for Community Empowerment. I'm calling to echo what my ACE colleagues said in support of an anti-harassment ordinance. We, you know, we talked to a lot of individuals who are being harassed by landlords and this is an overall part of the housing issues that we see in our community and in a lot of communities. So without an anti-harassment ordinance, you know, harassment is effectively incentivized for certain people who might be a little more unscrupulous. And each individual who's being harassed has the potential to become, you know, tomorrow's next cohort of the newly homeless. So this is part of a patchwork of actions that we should be taking, multi-pronged approach to prevent the further, the further bleeding of citizens onto the streets of Sacramento. So just appreciate your time and please do expedite the development of this anti-harassment ordinance. We really can't wait or let this problem get worse. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes. Hi caller, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Ulo Koto. I live in District 2 and support passing a tenant anti-harassment policy.
Okay, thank you. Is that, is that the end of your comment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. And you can hang up the phone now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, and I believe we have one caller left. If you could transfer that caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Eileen Pinky Tony and I'm a member of the Alliance of Californians for Community Empowerment. I'm calling today to encourage you and other Sacramento County supervisors to stand with Sacramento tenants by passing a strong anti-harassment ordinance. Landlord harassment is not a new phenomenon, but following the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, harassment, illegal evictions arise. I'm just going to cut to the chase here. I stand here today along with my fellow organizers, leaders, and tenants all across Sacramento. I see too many families being displaced every day because the county of Sacramento and its Board of Supervisors is failing to pass such ordinances as anti-harassment. I'm a mother, a mother of whom experienced homelessness in your county with my two children and my disabled spouse, due to the harassment and illegal eviction because Sacramento County allows the property owners to do so. After a long year of homelessness and still pending nine-year court eviction case in your county, I have learned to help and fight for tenants' rights alongside my ACE family and are being, and families all across Sacramento right now are being displaced because Sacramento fails to protect its community members from such actions. That is why I'm asking you to pass an anti-harassment ordinance that holds landlords accountable for acts such as influencing a tenant to vacate a rental unit through fraud or intimidation or any other means possible, abusing the owner's right to access the tenant's rental unit, invading a tenant's right to privacy, and refusing to do repairs for purposes of harassment. I'm asking you guys to please, please pass this anti-harassment ordinance. It is important to, for curbing the growth of homelessness, which recently found, has increased, we all know, by 67% since 2019. Please pass, well, please move fast and pass a comprehensive anti-harassment ordinance that holds abusive landlords in Sacramento County accountable. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. And that concludes your comments for Off Agenda. Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Flo. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first of all, I just want to express my thanks to everyone that's joined us here today in chambers to speak your piece with regards to ongoing collective bargaining as it relates to the home care workers. And again, let me preface my comments with, again, we cannot take any action today as this is not an agendized item. However, as soon as I walked in chambers today and saw the sea of purple, which, which is something I've become accustomed to over the years on occasion, I did take the time to quickly ask our deputy executive in charge of internal services who oversees personnel to give me a brief understanding of where we are in terms of that bargaining. I know there have been some members, I believe, in the bargaining committee that spoke this morning. And my understanding is that there hasn't been any receipt as of yet, and correct me if I'm wrong, but... if I'm wrong, but hasn't been any receipt as of yet of the economics. And I, you know, we don't do the bargaining. We have, we have people to do that. But we can't bargain from the dais. You've heard us comment in the past in terms of, I think, showing some empathy with regards to the position of our county's home care workers. But without having the, you know, a formal understanding of the economics from the bargaining unit, it's difficult for us to, to respond as a, as a practical matter. So I would just simply encourage the ongoing discussions in terms of the collective bargaining activity, but with some emphasis that if there isn't a discussion as of yet about economics, now's the time. So I'm, I'm hoping that after today, the next time we ask for an update or we meet in closed session, that that has transpired, so we actually have something to respond to that's material. So I'll leave it at that because, again, we can't really get into too much details. But again, appreciate everyone being here and taking the time out of your busy days, both providers and those that you serve. It means a lot to hear from you, and you have every right and ability to air your grievances before this board, and certainly labor negotiations is part of that. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say, as a new member of this board, I really appreciated the use of the silent applause. It was very effective, and yet it allowed the meeting to, to go along at a, at a good clip. So thank you all for that. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Yes, before we move off this, I just want to echo the statements of Supervisor Serna. Thank all of you for being here. Thank for, thank you for your respectfulness during these off-agenda comments. It, it matters. It makes a difference. It certainly has influence over me, and I too look forward to us in closed session having a discussion about some proposals, some things that are on the table. So hope that will move forward very soon. Okay, with that, then let's.
Excuse me, Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see Supervisor Frost. Sorry about that.
I just wanted to add a quick, for our friend in the front row who's visually impaired, you may not have seen it, but you got a huge silent applause after you talked.
Thank you, Supervisor Frost. Okay, with that, let's move on to consent items two through 49. Madam Clerk, I think there's one item you need to read into the record, I believe.
Yes, so I'll just wait for them to exit. Is that okay?
Okay, well, let's, right, we'll take a few minutes. Thank you, everybody. Leave with, leave with the clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, no, I think I'm fine. If you need me to check, I'm ready. I have the thing ready to go so that I can lock it.
I know, right? Okay, let's, let's keep things moving. We're about an hour or so behind schedule, hour, hour and 15 minutes. So we'll move on to consent items and.
So for.
I just want to note that we have, we actually have a chair that references being behind schedule. That's kind of refreshing.
We have people in chambers with an expectation on when an agenda item is going to come up.
By the way, Mr. Chair, I think this new system is working very well, so.
I appreciate that, and I encourage any board members, as you know, and please let Flo know your comments about how we can improve the meeting, certainly. I think this is a good, so far it's been working well, but we'll, we'll keep adapting to improve, keep improving, so.
Thank you, Brenda, for that. Thank you. Okay, for your consent matters, items two through 49. For item four, you are adopting an ordinance amending 2.61.090 of the Sacramento County Code related to delegation of authority in accepting revenue contracts. You waived reading on this on January 10th, and those are the only notes that I have from the clerk's office.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll look to my colleagues, see if anybody has any, any comments or would like to call a matter off consent. I see Supervisor Serna.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a bit of a list today, and I'll try and make it brief. Item 26.
Okay. Do you want to give me your list ahead of time, and that way I'll be ready for you?
26, 28, 29, 42.
26, 28.
29, 42.
42, thank you. Okay, item 26 is a retroactive authorization to execute operational agreements with court-appointed special advocates in Sacramento Regional Family Justice Center for the County Victim Services Program for the period January 1 through December 31, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just a quick word of thanks publicly to both CASA and to the Sacramento Regional Family Justice Center for all they do for, for victims of crime here in Sacramento County and across the region. And of course, CASA, which is a longtime institution here in Sacramento County, doing great work on behalf of children and families. So with that, I think it's obvious that I plan to support this, this item, as I would hope others will. But thanks to both organizations for all the great work you do.
Okay, item 28 is the authorization to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Mutual Assistance Network for the period of February 1 through January 31, 2028.
Yes, during my briefings, I mentioned that I was a little unclear on what the contract extension options were, and just wondering if Mr. Villanueva or others might have some insights about that.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive Eric Jones, has some comments on that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to check if we have a representative from the sheriff's office either online or in chambers.
Oh, he's retired, but.
Tell us what you really think.
Lieutenant Dustin Silva, I can speak to it a little bit.
Good. Thank you. Yes, so if you can tell us about the, we understand this is a five-year agreement, and we understand there are one-year renewal options for three years. If you can provide any additional detail for that, please.
Correct. I know our standard contract is usually three years.
Excuse me, who is, who is it on the line? Could you just let us know your name?
It's Lieutenant Dustin Silva with the Sheriff's Department.
Oh, thank you, Dustin.
So, yeah, our, our standard contracts are three years with the options of two one-year extensions. Just a little bit of history with this group. When we first started, it was, it was, we, was kind of an adversarial relationship. We've worked on that over the last year or so. And so we did it for a longer period, just as a show of good faith in that, that we wanted this relationship to really work and blossom. So that, that's the reason for the five years rather than the three.
Okay, great. Thank you, that helps. Appreciate it.
Item 29 is the retroactive authorization to apply for Central Valley High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area 2023 base budget grant funding from the Executive Office of the President Office of National Drug Control Policy in the amount of $3,919,813 for the period of January 1 through December 31, 2024.
Very good, thank you, Madam Clerk. So this is a familiar grant, either application or retroactive authorization to apply for accept grant funds for this purpose. But what drew my attention from the board letter is the list of substances that are, would be the subject of various interventions. And I asked the question during my briefing of Mr. Villanueva, what we know about the success of various interdiction activities relative to the different substances. And of course, I wanted to know much more about methamphetamine in particular, especially relative to marijuana, especially after the passage of Prop 64 and certainly the proliferation of, of legal recreational use in California. And I don't know if there's more, David, that you can share based on that question, or if you have someone on the line, or Mr. Jones could, could answer. But I'd like to kind of understand where we are specific to using these grant funds in years past and moving forward, how we might use them specific to limiting the availability of methamphetamine on our streets.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Again, we had an opportunity to look into this, and Mr. Jones has some additional information for you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again. Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive, Public Safety and Justice. And with the HIDA grant, you're correct that there were four, well, specific drugs that were called out as to the work that this group does, both within Sacramento and regionally, which, again, are fentanyl, methamphetamine, cocaine, heroin, and marijuana, so those five. And certainly the fentanyl crisis, I know that there's been a large focus around that, as well as methamphetamine. A lot of what HIDA does, as well as not focus on use, really what, what HIDA focuses on in the task force is the criminal, violent criminal organizations that maybe relate across the board with those five different types of drugs or combination. But really, their enforcement efforts are not on the usage, but actually on the violent criminal organizations that are involved in the sales of, of those. And there may be a sheriff's office representative that can provide some more detail or answer any more detailed questions.
Yeah, Lieutenant John Homan here, from Sacramento County Sheriff's Office. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here to answer any further questions you may have, sir.
No, I think Mr. Jones replied generally to the, to the question. I guess what I would like to see happen, Mr. Chair, without any objection from your office, is perhaps to, in the spring, to have scheduled a non-action item overview or public briefing, if you will. Don't want to call it a workshop necessarily, but I think it's important for this board to maybe get a better understanding of the current situation relative to methamphetamine production, importation of half or partway-produced methamphetamine, the precursors that, my understanding generally, come across our southern border primarily, and also distribution trends here in Sacramento County, as well as what we're seeing relative to, to use and kind of the, you know, the very, very troubling ramifications of, of methamphetamine addiction in the community. Again, this is, you know, a bit of my soapbox, but it continues to be kind of the single most critical issue, for me at least, relative to what we're seeing in terms of the, you know, criminal activity in and around the county and the region, and also, you know, what it's done to really play an unfortunate, large role relative to the homeless situation. So maybe in the March-April timeframe, we could have that. And of course, we do have a very structured methamphetamine working group that continues to do a lot of good work that I think would be good to have front and center, but that would be something I'd ask you to perhaps work with my office and, and the executive's office to kind of refine and bring to the board and the public.
I appreciate that, absolutely. I'll work with your office on that. I think it's, it's extremely important to shine a very bright light on this and, and the impact it's having on our communities and how it's been evolving over time. So absolutely, I'll commit to that. But you're not, you're not asking to delay.
No.
This item, okay.
No, not at all.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna.
I just thought it would be a good opportunity to make mention of it. And then last, item 42.
Yeah, item 42 is the retroactive authority for the Department of Human Assistance to submit an application to the California Interagency Council on Homelessness for funding through the homeless, homeless housing assistance and prevention grant round four.
Great, thank you. So this, this item gave me pause to, to consider this fact, which I think is interesting. I would hope my colleagues find it interesting. But ever since the last point in time count, where obviously we saw the unfortunate increases in the number of homeless that were the subject of that biannual census sponsored by the federal government, HUD in particular, there's been a lot of media attention, there's been a lot of public attention, and rightfully so, on that increase. But this board, to my knowledge, hasn't really received any information about the proportionality of resources that come from the federal government or the state relative to the point-in-time count. And so this item gave me something to think about in those terms, and I think it's important to understand that. I think many times California is, or representatives of the, of, of the state, either at the legislature or constitutional officers make mention of the fact that, you know, for every dollar that goes to Washington, we get cents back. And I think in a similar way, we should have a better understanding of what happens both on the resource side and the challenge side, if you will, when we have every two years a better understanding of the magnitude and characteristics of our homeless population. So I'm hopeful that, again, maybe in a presentation forthcoming before this board and the public, we could have a, a better understanding of what it means and the totality of, of understanding the point-in-time numbers, what it means in terms of the resource side of the ledger. So I'm hopeful that can happen perhaps in short order. Those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Serna. I see staff taking a lot of notes over there, so those discussions will be incorporated into, I believe, future presentations. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So I guess I list out the items, and I'll have questions on.
That would be helpful.
Okay, item four, item 12, and item 17.
Got it. Item four is the ordinance amending 2.61.090 of the Sacramento County Code related to delegation of authority in accepting revenue contracts. You're adopting this ordinance.
Great, thank you. I apologize, I had a difficulty getting into my agenda to go last night. I just want to clarify that this is the item you briefed me on, I believe it was for last meeting, that this will allow for the acceptance of revenue commensurate with what is the expenditure limits for the various positions.
Yes, Supervisor.
Thank you, sir. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
All right. Item 12 is the request for retroactive authorization to apply for a local agency technical assistance grant for an amount not to exceed $500,000 to conduct feasibility study to support developing broadband services to underserved communities in Sacramento County.
Thank you. And so again, this question, given that it's a retroactive authorization, we've already received this grant, so I'm just asking for a briefing on how it's being deployed, given that this primarily serves Delta, Mather, Wilton, and Herald, and particularly Delta and Herald are clamoring for a better broadband access, and I think that the recent storm events have exacerbated their, their desire and need, so.
Supervisor Hume, just for clarification, this is, we have applied for the grant, but we have not necessarily received the grant, so we are still waiting to hear for the receiving of the grant, and we will absolutely give you a briefing on that information and agree 100% that the Delta and the areas affected by the storm are, overlay the areas that have lower ability to access broadband internet.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And I'd like to come in on that, and David, let me just clarify, this is kind of the first phase, is more, more of an assessment of the needs, and then there will be a subsequent grant process for us to get resources to actually create those, that broadband infrastructure. Is that, is that accurate?
It's correct that this is an assessment phase, and this is the grant that we applied for, for the assessment piece of it. We hope that there's additional grants coming forward. We suspect there is. There's a lot.
But that's what's been indicated by the state, is that?
Right. Right, but we have yet to see that information.
Yeah, item 17 is a contract. This is the Franklin Boulevard Bridge replacement over Los Slough and Alta Mesa Road Bridge replacement over Laguna Creek. Bids to be received on March 2, 2023, and the environmental document is initial study and mitigated negative declaration.
Thank you. And this one, it's not even so much about the item specific per se, other than the fact that by coupling these two projects together, given that the contractor will be deploying resources out into the South County, it gave me an idea. You know, my predecessor quipped that in the South County, the pothole. my predecessor quipped that in the South County, the potholes are sometimes the best parts about the road. And so to the extent that we can look at somehow extending either the aprons of these bridge improvements and/or doing any sort of work out that way to tag on, or, you know, in the future, where we have contractors deploying out into some of these areas, if there's any way to increase the scope of what they're doing, since they'll be in the neighborhood, so to speak. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Hume. I don't see any other supervisors in the queue for comments on consent items. Do we have any public comment?
We do not. So I'm going to close the public comments at this time.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second on consent, please vote.
I think that was a motion by Supervisor Kennedy and then
Second by Supervisor Frost.
Frost, thank you. And that's a unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move on to our timed items, item 50.
Yes, so item 50 is the presentation of resolution honoring Under Sheriff James Barnes on the occasion of his retirement.
And I would ask retired Under Sheriff Barnes to please join me at the lectern, along with perhaps his wife, my former colleague, Helena.
Okay.
I'm glad you were able to sit here through that last hour and a half, Jim, because, you know, now you know what you have, right? Just one last reminder. Well, I'm honored to be here to present you with your retirement resolution. And I anticipate my colleagues will probably have comments as well. And before we begin, I did, I worked in the Highway Patrol with Helena Williams, Jim's wife, and so it's always wonderful to see you as well. So I'm going to read, I'm just kind of cherry pick some of the highlights from the resolution. I will not read the whole thing. I'm pleased to have former Under Sheriff Barnes, to recognize him upon his retirement after 24 years of distinguished service and a career dedicated to protecting those throughout Sacramento County. Jim graduated from California State University with a degree in social services. He began his career in law enforcement in July 1998, when he enrolled in Sacramento County's Basic Recruit Academy and accepted the position of intake officer at the Sacramento County Main Jail. Over the past 24 years, Jim served in many positions and ranks. He was a detective in the Centralized Investigations Division, Sexual Assault and Elder Bureau, and Homicide Bureau, and has been, was a sergeant in many other divisions. After these assignments, Jim continued to grow in his career and served as lieutenant watch commander for the Ranzer Cordova Police Department and Sheriff's East Division, and served as commander of a number of divisions before becoming the chief deputy of field and investigative services. Throughout his career, Jim has been recognized for his hard work and dedication, receiving the Employee of the Year Award in 2001 and 2012. He's an active member of the community and was recognized in 2006 when he received Weave's Act of Compassion Citizens Award and a Letter of Appreciation and Life-Saving Award from the Sacramento Fire Department. Jim earned the position of under sheriff in March of 2022, where he served until his retirement at the end of 2022. And Jim, you have illustrated leadership throughout your career by mentoring others, and I've seen it firsthand, creating a team environment and bringing innovative ideas to develop programs, and bringing members of the community together, diverse members of the community together. You dedicated your career to public safety. And in retirement, I know you look forward to more time with your family and friends. And it's a great honor for me, as Chair of the Board of Supervisors, to honor Jim Barnes for his many professional accomplishments and his commitment to keeping communities safe throughout Sacramento County. And further, on behalf of the board, we offer our sincere best wishes to you and your entire family for good health, happiness, and many blessings in the years to come. I appreciate that. Thank you. I'll present this to you, and we get a photo. Helena, please come in here. Tell me where to go, Flo, if you want me to stand somewhere else.
Thank you.
I'd invite my fellow supervisors, if you have any comments.
Well, I don't know if Mr. Barnes wants to speak first. I would
You're right.
relinquish the floor to him first.
See, that's why I rely on my seniors in rank here to tell me what I need to do. Please, Jim.
I prefer not, but I appreciate it. No, Mr. Chair, thank you for the presentation, and board supervisors, county leadership, and Flo, always a pleasure, Alicia as well. I don't miss what happened earlier, so I applaud you all for still being here and taking on that fight. But it was funny, yesterday, I was on the backside of the property cutting up our final tree that had blown over during the storm, and Helena called me, and she said, "Don't get mad at me." And I said, "I'm cutting up a tree in the backyard, and you're on your way to play golf with friends. What else could I be mad at?" And so she let me know this was happening. It was absolute utter surprise until yesterday. So I know why she kept it a surprise. I don't, I don't like these types.
I'm in trouble.
Yeah, she's in trouble. I don't like it. But obviously, the previous relationship helped. She went behind the back, and I forgive you for that. But it was, it was an honor and a pleasure to serve the county for 24 years. It's been kind of a mixed feeling. When I walked away, I thought it'd be great to be, oh, yeah, fine, you know, being retired, don't worry about it. The best part is not answering phone calls, not answering emails, and getting the best sleep I've had in decades. The part I missed the most of the relationships, and being able to build together, solve problems together. There's some people that just walked in the back. I just think of all the great memories I've had over the years. So it was tough to walk away, because I still love it. I got a lot of gas left in the tank. There's still more in the future that's coming. But for right now, I enjoy my time with my family, my wife. Over 20 years of marriage, we've been battle tested, as we talk about it. But, you know, watching our daughter succeed in sports and being able to be at every event and not have to hustle away because of a meeting or an incident has been nice. And it's even been echoed by our daughter, Gianna, who's actually recently talked about that. It's nice that we're not trying to navigate who's going to pick her up or drop her off at any event. So for this, it means more than you know, and just thank you. Thank you today.
Great, thank you. So first of all, congratulations, Jim. And I no doubt understand that this is a bit uncomfortable for you, knowing, I think, much about your humility. You mentioned relationships. I'm glad you did that. You and I don't share, I think it's safe to say, much of the same politics, maybe some. But I will tell you that the day that we shared together doing the ride-along and having a chance to get to know not just kind of, you know, what it feels like and looks like to, you know, do the profession that you ascribe to, but to also have, you know, a conversation with you about what's important to you professionally, personally even. And I think we quickly found a lot of common denominators to what you and I both value. And that is, you know, commitment to community and public service. And I got to tell you, I really valued that, that day, because it really educated me and showed me, you know, we can be very different politically. But when it comes to Sacramento County, when it comes to the Call of Duty and service in general, that supersedes the politics. And, you know, you were following that day very instrumental, working with me and our office on the ongoing challenges with jail, and happy to report that we're going to continue that, that work. And it's thanks to you that it even got off the ground. But I just wanted to make mention the fact that, on a personal note, I just find you to be a very, very, I think you have a great deal of integrity that shows. And that doesn't always come across from some folks who differ from yourself when it comes to something as, sometimes intimate, as politics. So do appreciate your service, wish you well in your retirement. Yeah, I hope your wife gets out of the doghouse soon. But, you know, again, I think I would be remiss if I didn't recall that experience with you. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. I'll go next, followed by Supervisor Frost, and then Supervisor Hume. Okay, one thing I'm going to do is finally acquiesce to what you've been telling me for years now. And now that you're retired, I will refer to you as Jim.
Thank you.
And I will also say, Helena, I too had the opportunity to spend a day with Jim on a ride-along and cannabis, a couple cannabis busts, and big ones. And during that day, he regaled on stories about you and your career as well. So you're not in too much trouble. And had you told him, he would not be here this morning. I do want to echo what Supervisor Serna said. I will tell you, from the perspective of District Two, our office and our constituents have never had a stronger, better, more open, responsive relationship with, and this is not a criticism of the sheriff's office, it's just maybe something that everybody can aspire to, than we did when you were the central commander. Your not only willingness to talk with the public and genuinely engage with the public, and our office is representatives of the public, but to problem solve and to really, you know, look at things in overused term, but it's true outside the box, was always really admirable and something that we enjoyed working with you. The day that you got moved someplace else was a dark day in District Two's office, I'll tell you that. So I want to thank you for the service that you've provided for South Sacramento, for the county of Sacramento. You have truly been inspirational. And I'll tell one quick story. In one of our coffee meetings, I had the uncomfortable situation of having to explain to Jim that he was running for sheriff against a guy I've known for 30 years. And that, you know, as much as I admired you and the work that you've done, I had to go with somebody who's, you know, I've known for 30 years out of loyalty and all of that. It's a very difficult decision to make. My point is this, after I told you I was not going to endorse you, not that my endorsement means anything, you know, the only thing that he came back to me with was, "Well, I know you're running again. Can I endorse you?" That shows the kind of man you are. You know, you are into this first for community, and way, way in the background is any kind of ego. And I appreciate you, I admire you, and I thank you for your service, and wish you the best in your retirement.
Thank you very much. It means a lot.
Supervisor Frost?
Under Sheriff Barnes, Jim. I just want to thank you for, you know, everything that you have done, your service to the county. I won't forget, you know, the tour of the jail, the tour of, is it Central Division or East Division? Central?
Central.
Yeah. And, and I want to say, you're more than a, you were more than a sheriff, because you were kind of an unsung hero. Because it was wonderful to learn about all that you did on the homeless front, and to organize all the, you know, belongings that people, I don't think people realize all that the sheriff does. You know, they, when they move encampments, they have to store things for 90 days. And how you organized that and turned it into a community project, you're more than a sheriff. You're part of the community. I also want to thank you for the relationship that we've had. I hope, I hope it continues. But I know you're going to be busy with, you know, to-dos. But, but all the times, the texts, the personal things that I called you, and you helped me, even times when I was calling you about sideshows, and you said, "Oh, you need to talk to Helena. She's the one that knows about that. She's the CHP." And Helena, I want to thank you for your help over time. We're finally making progress, and I know in big part because of Supervisor Desmond's maybe connection with the state. And so I'm very excited about that. But, and lastly, I just want to thank you for your understanding of the law and your commitment to, your oath. And in my opinion, you were, you are a great sheriff and someone that I have a great deal of respect for. And I want to thank you for all that you've done for Sacramento County.
Thank you very much. It means a lot.
Supervisor Hume?
So my main reason for putting in a request to speak is just because I know the longer you have to stand at that podium, the more personally uncomfortable you get.
True.
You know, I've gotten the opportunity to get to know you over the last couple of years. And, you know, the one thing, and this kind of is being echoed from my colleagues here, is you have a servant's heart. And that is apparent from the day you show up and what you say and how you treat things, and the magnanimous nature in which you, you know, agree to disagree with those that you have to. And so Helena, I'm glad that you have somebody to clear up all that mess around the property right now, and that that gets done. And you take some time to do the things you maybe have been putting on the backburner. And you take that time to enjoy your family and be there. I know that this is not retirement for you. It's a transition into the next phase. And I wish you both all the happiness and all the enjoyment and everything that you have coming to you for your years of dedicated public service. And so thank you very much for what you've given to Sacramento County. And if there's anything I can do to give back to you, please let me know.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Supervisor Desmond, again, thank you again. My brother, Helena even got my brother to come down here, which was a surprise as well. So he retired from the sheriff's office and coaches over at American River College. So just again, thank you to the men and women of the sheriff's office. I loved each and every one of them. That's what I say about you when you look at your community leaders, even the people that may be in opposition. Love all over the people in the county of Sacramento, leave them better than you found them. You stay with that motto, everything's going to be fine. So again, I just say thank you. Your words are heartfelt. Thank you for doing this. You are out of the doghouse. You never got in. I just have to act tough every now and then. But again, thank you, good luck, and I appreciate it. It means a lot.
Thanks, Jim.
I'll have a photo with my colleague, Lou, down here. I would have to take a few photos here with my family, including Helena.
Yes, here.
One, two, and three. Taking a couple, more than a couple. Get these to everyone. Okay, and then let's do one with the dignitaries.
Where?
We actually make such important, like officials. Okay, there we go. Very nice. One, two, three, taking several. You guys look good. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you again.
Okay, well, let's move on to item 51. Was there any public comment on?
No.
Okay. Plenty of public comment.
Yeah.
Item 51.
Okay, item 51 is the approval of the 2023-24 federal and state legislative priorities.
Supervisors, we have Ms. DeBoer coming up. She's currently the Acting Legislative Affairs Director to give a presentation on this item.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Alicia.
Hi, good morning, chair and members of the board. I'm Alicia DeBoer, acting governmental relations and legislative officer. Each year, the board adopts the federal and state legislative priorities. This document establishes the principles of the board and guides legislative decisions and advocacy efforts made on your behalf. Not sure it is. Is that working? Over the next 20 minutes. Thank you. Over the next 20 minutes, I will first have Audrey Ratajek, our state lobbyist, give an overview of the past legislative year and a forecast of 2023. I will then highlight federal achievements, provide an overview of the process and top changes in the platform, and then open it to you to provide input and comments. Thank you.
Morning, Audrey.
Morning. Okay, yeah, thank you. Good morning, Audrey Ratajek from Crew Strategies. Great to be here today to present on the legislative successes that we had on behalf of the county in 2022, and then a quick look ahead into the new session that just started in early January. I feel like last year, we had a really great year, and it was so great to work with all of you, the supervisors, and with Alicia and our state delegation to put forward the county's legislative and budget agenda. Before jumping into our specific county proposals that we worked on last year and some of the successes that we had, I wanted to provide a very brief, high-level overview of some of the larger budget and policy issues that were advanced by the legislature last year, with the caveat that some of that has already been scaled back a little bit in the governor's January budget, given the $25 billion deficit this year. billion deficit this year. But last year, as you recall, there was a almost $100 billion surplus for the state that led to lots of spending on climate, infrastructure, transportation, and drought preparedness. Transportation was one of the significant investments last year. There was a four-year, $10.8 billion transportation package. A lot of that focused on funding for transit, freight, active transportation, and climate adaption. And then there was lots of funding for climate and drought. That was the big package that was done last year, $19.8 billion. It had a focus on water, drought, wildfire, extreme heat, sea level rise, and energy. We provided a funding breakdown of where that money is going and the different programs that the county could potentially be eligible for, and provided that to departments, and we'll keep it updated as those state programs start to get rolled out. And then last year, a big part that's continuing on into this year was the care court proposal. That was the governor's initiative that ended up passing in SB 1338. We had worked with the state associations to advocate for amendments to make the proposal workable and just to help provide the necessary resources and funding to the county to make this successful. As you know, we're part of the second cohort that will implement that in December of next year. So we continue to work with our county partners this year to ensure there's enough funding as we take on that new responsibility. So that was some of the, the big items from last year. Again, with the governor's January budget last, this year, some of that's already been scaled back or put off into out years. But he's looking for federal funding or other resources after taxes come in at the May revise to see if some of those can be adjusted. I will note that two of the main topics that didn't have cuts in the governor's January budget were homelessness and drought and, you know, water response. So those were the two areas that kept a lot of that funding. To Supervisor Serna's question, the HAP program is most closely tied to the point-in-time count, and he put $1 billion into the fifth round for that. At the federal level, it goes through the continuum of care, and it's a lot more convoluted process. But I know Emily is working on a memo that will answer all of that. So at the state level, HAP has been the most tied to that, and that was one of the investments that remained in this year's budget.
Through the chair, it's the proportionality that I'm most interested in. So hopefully that's understood.
Yep.
Thanks.
So that was kind of the overview from last year. I wanted to talk about a few of the successes that we had on county-specific items that were really exciting. Last year, we worked really closely with Supervisor Desmond and Supervisor Frost on a request that went through CHP for $5.5 million to help bolster state and local sideshow task force. We had initially ran it as a sponsored budget request the year before for $2 million, and we laid a lot of the groundwork by meeting with budget committees, legislators, state agencies, and the governor's office to lay the groundwork. It didn't get funded that year, so we brought it back this year and actually doubled the amount. And so it was $5 million that got included. We've been working with CHP on, you know, the implementation of that. It also got implemented to add $500,000 related to PSAs that can go throughout the state to help prevent sideshows. And we've learned that, I think, CHP plans to add an additional $500,000 match to make it a million for the PSAs. So exciting news on that front. We also worked closely with Assemblymember Cooley to put forward a budget request of $3 million to fund renovations and repairs at the Mather Community Campus homeless facility. So similar to the sideshow requests that required a lot of groundwork and meetings with the key players in the budget process, and we were really excited that that got funded in the budget last year as well. And then in close coordination with all of you, I know you had worked closely-
Excuse me, Audrey, do you want to forward the slides?
Oh, I totally forgot, sorry. There we go.
Thank you.
And then for homelessness funding, I know in close coordination with all of you, it was exciting that Assemblymember McCarty and Assemblymember Cooley had championed the $25 million budget allocation to the county to help homelessness along the American River Parkway. We had worked with their office and with Senator Pan earlier last year on a similar wildfire-related American River Parkway request, so we were thrilled that that funding ultimately got included as well. SB 1065 by Senator Agman was our county-sponsored bill to establish a coordinating council for the removal of commercial and abandoned derelict vessels in the Delta and statewide. We worked on this bill tirelessly all year long last year in close coordination with Alicia, Natasha, and Sergeant Epperson, who put in extensive work to develop and refine the proposal as it moved through the legislative process. We passed through the whole legislature, I don't think we got a single no vote, and laid so much of the groundwork, and then ultimately, the governor vetoed the bill because it didn't have a direct funding source tied to it. He pretty much vetoed everything that didn't have a funding source tied to it, given that they knew that the, the budget deficit was coming this year. So we're already working with the senator's office and a few other Delta legislatures on bringing back a CADV bill this year, whether in a little bit of a scaled-back version, given the budget, but we're working on that with them now. For the farmers market funding requests, we had worked closely last year with Senator Pan and the Alchemist Group to put forward a budget request for a grant program to expand EBT access at farmers markets. We requested $1.3 million for the county specifically, but the issue was so important that the Alchemist and other groups had already wanted to expand the pot because there's a great statewide need. So we helped put forward SB 907 by Senator Pan last year. That ended up getting signed by the governor, and it established the grant program that will ultimately get this funding out. The funding, although, wasn't attached to it. So the bill was signed, but we're coming back this year and finding legislative champions and working with our coalition partners to put forward that budget request this year. The current ask is $20 million over three years, so it would be a total of $60 million to fund the grant program. So we'll continue to work on that this year. In terms of wildfire funding, I wanted to mention, we pursued a budget request of $3 million last year to create a grant program for wildfire prevention efforts to help protect portions of the county in wildfire-prone areas. Assemblymember Cooley championed this on our behalf and submitted the letter to the budget subcommittees. Ultimately, it wasn't included in the budget as a direct allocation to Sacramento, since the state wanted to provide larger pots of wildfire funding, since it's a statewide issue. So there was $30 million general fund for investments to support wildfire and forest resilience, but we're working closely with Supervisor Frost and the Fire Council on next steps of something that we could potentially bring back this year to make it more direct to Sacramento County. And lastly, just a quick look ahead into 2023. I can't tell you too much yet, since they've only been in session for three weeks, and there's 30 new legislators, or over 30, I think there's 34. So folks are moving around and getting settled and selecting their new staff and everything. But one we know is the budget deficit, so there's the initial cuts to some of the climate funding last year, but will, remains to be seen after the May revise if some of that will come back. There's been about 500 bills introduced so far. Lots of them are spot bills, but they have until February 17th. So we'll see hundreds more coming in by the day on the three days before the deadline. But in the initial tranche of bills that we've seen so far, I flagged four kind of priority areas that it seems like the legislature will be focusing on. One is the fentanyl crisis, which I already heard was addressed earlier today, but there's been at least 22 bills introduced on that topic already. And a fentanyl task force was already formed by the legislature, so that's going to be one big issue this year. Two is accountability for homelessness funding. That was a big theme throughout the governor's budget, making sure that counties and cities are meeting their, their housing goals in order to get homelessness funding and things like that. So we haven't seen actual language on those proposals, but it'll be coming out through the Department of Finance soon. So that's another one. And then lastly, is drought response and preparedness, I think, will be important. We've seen a number of bills on that, and the governors continue to talk about that. And then lastly, behavioral health with continuing the care court proposal and making sure there's funding, plus some other bills have been introduced on that topic so far. So with that, I will turn it back over to Alicia to go through the federal highlights from last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey.
Thank you, Audrey. Sacramento County contracts with federal advocates Holland and Knight and the Ferguson Group, and our 2022 wins include, but are not limited to, $1.5 million for Mather Community Campus facility improvements through the fiscal year 23 appropriations process. And I'd like to credit Congressman Bera and Senators Padilla and Feinstein for that funding. Our Mather Community Campus serves as emergency shelter and provides transitional housing for those experiencing homelessness, as you know, including families and veterans. The structure needs to be secure and safe, and so funding for that effort helps, as well as the state's $3 million. We also secured $2.8 million for the county's regional conjunctive use project, again, thanks to Representatives Bera and Padilla. This helps construct three drought relief projects to build a more drought-resilient, sustainable water supply for the county and our residents. There's also FAA grant and stimulus funding for airports, grant funding for at-risk youth, and more. I have our federal advocates on the line if you have any questions in that area. In the water arena, we successfully advocated for a $50 million federal authorization for our Delta counties in the Water Resources Development Act. This is an authorization for flood relief and includes non-Delta levies. There was a separate Sacramento County authorization for invasive species, and funds are made available to address harmful algal blooms that pollute the Delta. Here are some 2023 federal opportunities to pursue. We can compete, again, in the appropriations process, but for 2024. The president's omnibus package includes funding for homelessness, housing, and community development infrastructure, and how that translates to Sacramento County is being discussed. There are other funding opportunities under the bipartisan infrastructure law that the county can benefit from. And in addition to what's here on recent storms, as you know, the president declared a California emergency and authorized FEMA to assist counties naming Sacramento, and this action maximizes flexibility for federal assistance. So this overview sheds light on your federal and state legislative platform, and much of it aligns with the county's priorities, as learned from your department directors at the time of meeting. This leads me to the process. In the fall, I met with department heads and our federal and state advocates to review the platform and provide changes and input. Overall, changes were not substantive. The main changes include making it a two-year document, and that's to coincide with the legislative calendar. This doesn't prevent the board from taking any action during that timeframe or sponsoring legislation. There was also language cleanup for purposes of clarity, meaning wasn't lost, and almost all the statements positioned the county to receive funding. Explanation of the changes are in your board memo, and I open it to you for comments and suggestions.
Are there any questions or comments? Supervisor Hume.
Thank you. Alicia, I had the opportunity to email you a couple of my concerns, and I've read through the document again, and I think my questions regarding disaster relief are pretty well covered under Section N. So I don't think that we need to get into that necessarily, except that under the focus areas, Section 3, just as a general statement, line item 5, support funding to enhance local climate mitigation and adaptation efforts, and then item 7, improve and mitigate risks to the Sacramento San Joaquin Delta. Obviously, for, for District 5, the importance of the flood control of the Casumnas has really risen to the top there, and, no pun intended sadly, and as well as, you know, looking forward to the increased frequency of, you know, these atmospheric rivers and things that are causing this devastation. So I'd like to make sure that that's codified, at least, if nothing else, by this supervisor's voice in this document. And then, under item B, I guess it's B transportation, Section 8, supporting federal grant requests for transportation and other projects, a lot of things were, were struck relative to specific projects, and I think it was just given more to general priorities. And I recognize that I'm coming into this process late, as far as what's already been hashed out up here on the dais. And I do know that, that there is no way I'm ever going to get enough funding for the roads in the 5th district. But I would like to ask if my colleagues would be amenable to amend that language under Section 8, to, in addition to the things that are already called out, which are very important and much more urban in nature, if we could also add language regarding farm-to-market roads that are being traversed by vehicles carrying our agricultural goods.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Hume.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Just some clarification. So Supervisor Hume, your, your request is simply to, I assume you have a specific language with regards to the emphasis on the rural farm-to-market roads?
Uh, yeah, that was the language.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, and that's in which, which section? Can you just-
Sure, it's page 13. It's under, I don't know, heading B, transportation, sub-paragraph 8, support federal grant requests for transportation and other projects. Since we're just going to kind of general priorities, I'd like to see something in there that gives me a, you know, at least a camel's nose under the tent to get some money for, for roads that are primarily agricultural-serving.
Okay, and then, so before we take action on this, I'll go, I'll go to the other supervisors for comments, and then when we get to the point to decide if we can, if there's support to incorporate a change, or if it's something we need a little more time to, to make that change and come back. So with that, unless Supervisor, do you have a-
Yeah, I just had, sorry, just had a question, though, just so I know there's others in the queue. We were, we struck, though, reference to these specific roadways, correct? So would the amendment that Supervisor Hume is suggesting, I guess it would just be a, not a parenthetical, but it'd be an addition to the, the introductory paragraph there for number eight?
Exactly.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And to be clear, Supervisor Hume, are you asking that we bring back what I struck?
No.
No, okay. We can make a letter B?
No, and in fact, just, just the opposite. And I don't want to belabor this issue, because I know it's, it's somewhat academic in nature. But given that we are going away from the specificity of named projects and more towards overarching goals of what we would like to support, I would just see, like, like to see something codified in there, since we're talking about more urban uses and, and the support of, of new housing uses, that we also at least make mention of the importance of our roads that carry the food that we eat.
I think it would just be like a comma after the, after the last, after the last word in the introductory paragraph, and including the language that Supervisor Hume has suggested in terms of, was it farm-to-market?
Sure. And maybe, I mean, if you could rework some, work something up very quickly, we could get through the rest of the agenda items and maybe come back to that if we can see the language in here. I'd like to see it in print, what it's going to look like, because I'm having a difficult, you know, I just-
Sure.
I just hope former Supervisor Don Solis watching right now would be very proud of you.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Ah, geez.
Well, let's, let's go to Supervisor Frost.
Okay, Alicia, I want to thank you for the update and all the follow-up information. And also, I want to thank you and your department for all the work that you've done over the past years to help, a couple of years, I think, to, to kind of help us with those rural areas, Rancho Marietta specifically. Our Fire Safe Council is thrilled and very appreciative of the funding that we got this year for fire mitigation. And we, and I want to extend a thank you to Metro Fire and Parks and OES and Cal Fire and Assemblyman Cooley, and I'm sure there's someone, I forgot, your team, for, for all that support. I wanted to say that we're still working on that, and I appreciate, thank you for mentioning that. There's one component to this whole emergency evacuation plan that the community's working on that sort of came to light during the last storm. And that was that there are multiple roads, small roads, leading in and out of Rancho Marietta, but in an extreme flood event, almost all of them can be blocked by flooding. And to be specific, Dillard, Scott Road, Slough House, Latrobe, Grant Line, above Douglas, all at one point, and some all at the same time flooded during this event. And I was getting calls from constituents who were saying, basically, they had to turn around and go back and spend the night in Rancho Marietta because they couldn't get out. And I know it was an extreme event, but in, the conversation is about the safety of those outlying rural communities, and maybe this, I don't know if this ties in to, you know, the same goals, you know, aligns with the same goals of food to, you know, market. know, the same goals, aligns with the same goals of food to, you know, market, but I would like to ask, and at first, I want to, I want to underscore, you know, those roads out there do not have shoulders, they have narrowing points that create, you know, clogging, you know, in the event you needed to evacuate, it could end up being like the car fire, people can't get out, narrow bridges, which are huge, huge expense to widen those bridges, but they can be that narrowing point, and the fact that there's one main road out, and in some cases, in this last event, the only road out was to Jack, toward Jackson and not toward Sacramento County. And so what I'm asking is if we can include in the priorities, and I'm not sure where you, I'll ask you to recommend where that would be, if it would be under environmental or safety or transportation or all three. This is an issue that touches all three of those priorities, and that is that we look for funding that will help improve the safety of those roads that are leading, that provide ingress and egress into those extended communities. And I also want to note that, you know, part of my thought process is that we have, like, 800 homes coming in on that side of town in the near, you know, in the next decade, and it seems like this would be a good time to start advocating for some fixes, and I think there's some, some ways that we could do that, you know, start working on that, some hoping we can include that, I don't, in the, in the priorities.
Yes, thank you for that. We do have statements in our transportation section on roads, bike pedestrian improvements, so we have the flexibility to already begin that work, but because of the storm took center stage, it's important to make that a focus area, and so I can do that and say something to the effect of advocate for improved road safety and evacuation routes. And I'll look in our transportation section to maybe refine whatever policy statement we have to speak to your concerns.
Yeah, and finally, I want to thank you. I think what you did to, you know, create some efficiencies with this process is good, and I appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Frost. I just want to clarify, are you, are you asking for a specific change as well to incorporate some of that language? So?
Yes, and I've had this conversation with Alicia. I think I'm asking that it be codified in the document so we can know that it's a priority.
Yes, definitely.
And I'll, I'll look at my colleagues, unless there is an objection, I mean, what I'm just kind of thinking, and you let me know what your thoughts are, maybe we, Alicia, if you can come back, and we're talking about the transportation section, maybe you rework it and try to incorporate this language, and we bring this back?
Yes.
For a vote at the end, at the end of the other agendized items? Can we do that, Lisa? Because it sounds like these are slight changes.
You can either do that or just delegate authority to her to do that and don't have to see it.
Is that what that?
If, if it's clear enough what you want, and Alicia can do that after the fact.
So I can certainly put a finer point on what I was asking for, and it goes with what Supervisor Serna said, that simply after the word "housing" on line item number eight, something as simple as saying, "as well as farm-to-market roadways serving our agricultural sector." Just something that puts it in there that those roads are important to.
And I'd like to add that protection of food supply is a federal government priority right now, and viability of ag is critical infrastructure, so that would be a great addition.
Super.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure where, mine might, I know there's money for flood, there's a lot of money for, in several areas, so wherever you feel weak in best access funding for transportation infrastructure for road safety.
Yeah, our federal team is currently working on that, and some of the funding, such as the $50 million authorization that we advocated for through the Delta counties is for non-Delta levies, so we're hoping that maybe we can pursue that funding toward our devastated areas.
Great, so it sounds like some of what Supervisor Frost concerns can be handled through kind of the delegated authority, but Supervisor Hume requesting specific language, Lisa, would we need to see that in writing before we take action on it?
No, that's okay.
Okay, so this is specific enough, and it's obviously short, okay. Okay, I don't see any other supervisors with their hands raised, any, any public comment on this?
No public comments.
Okay, I would just say, before we move on to take action on this, thank you, Alicia and Audrey, very much appreciate this, appreciate the, the process, you reaching out to all the offices. What I would say, something I talked to you a little bit about as well, is on the advocacy side, no, no, that's not necessarily part of this, is I think we have a lot of opportunities in this board by virtue of proximity and by virtue of, I think, you have board members with a lot of expertise in areas to help us identify where we have opportunities to advocate for some of these things. I mean, I'm thinking, you know, we all attend different legislative conferences and things like that, it would be helpful for me if, before we attend these, certainly there's a NACO one and a CSAC one later in the year, to sit down and figure out maybe a strategy that may dovetail with the larger efforts of the, of the entity that we're, we are, who we are accompanying on these trips, but also, you know, opportunities to advocate for some of these legislative priorities, be looking for those opportunities. It always occurs to me that Sacramento County can and should be doing more in Sacramento, just, again, by virtue of the proximity, we could, we could probably be exerting a lot more influence here, so I look to you to help us identify those opportunities, so. Okay, with that, I'll look to my colleagues for a motion, we have to take action on this.
Chair, I would move approval.
Okay, we have a first and a second, and that is, of course, with that language that Supervisor Hume indicated. Okay, please vote.
And Frost.
And Frost. So it says, as amended, unanimous vote.
Thank you, Alicia.
Okay, item 52 is the declaration of a shelter crisis.
Okay, Emily?
Good morning.
Still morning?
Yes, good morning, members of the board. Emily Howken, the Director of the Department of Homeless Services and Housing. Today's item in front of you is seeking the board's approval to continue the declaration of a shelter crisis, first declared by the board in October of 2018, but more recently on February 15, 2022, to help facilitate the development of our safe stay communities and other alternative sheltering models. Given the rising and pervasive crisis of unsheltered homelessness, the board has continued to prioritize funding to address both the short-term and long-term needs to address this very complex issue. As you all know, part of our strategy is the development of new non-congregate sheltering options that we've named safe stay communities. These shelters invite people from the surrounding communities in and provide intensive wraparound supportive services with the goal of exiting folks to permanent housing. As you know, the board has approved three sites to date, which are in various stages of design and/or construction, and is continuing to look for new opportunities, both within the unincorporated county and in partnership with the city of Sacramento. Critical to our ability to provide this non-congregate sheltering is the use of alternative structures that can be brought online quicker than traditionally built structures. State law allows communities who do declare a shelter crisis to apply alternative building standards, Appendix X and Appendix O of the California Building Code, which allow for use of non-traditional sheltering facilities, including sleeping cabins, vehicles, and other non-traditional buildings. It also exempts certain actions related to development of these shelters from the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, and it provides some immunity from ordinary negligence claims to the county, should there be any issues related to the provision of these shelters. As the county is already underway in development of three shelter programs and potentially more, using these alternative building standards, continuation of this declaration today would be required to allow us to complete construction and ultimately occupy the sites. In addition to the provisions allowed by state code, this declaration will also continue the consideration that you gave us in last year's declaration to certain county department heads to deviate from traditional procurement and contracting requirements when we're selecting contractors or providers to help us build or operate these sheltering programs, or to address other immediate needs related to homelessness under the shelter crisis declaration. And finally, given the ongoing commitment from the board to develop sheltering and other services, and the anticipation that the need for these services are going to span over multiple years, this draft resolution in front of you today allows the declaration to remain in effect until the board determines it. This is different than the previous one, which required an active commitment every year. Rather than return annually then for that renewal of the declaration, my office would be returning annually for a report to the board on what has been developed or is underway under the shelter crisis declaration. That ends my comments, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Emily. Supervisor Frost.
Well, I guess you just answered my question, because I was, but all for the benefit of the public, say that, you know, I'm always reticent to do an ongoing, you know, crisis or emergency, but given the extreme nature of the homeless situation, I actually can see where, you know, it's logical that this is going to help you get what you need to get done, and I was going to request that you come back with regular updates, so thank you for that.
Will do, thank you. I should also note that by declaring a shelter crisis under the state law, we also are required to annually submit some reports to the state, so we're happy to share those as well as anything else with the board on our annual reports.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Frost. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. Obviously, this is a huge issue and touches many different departments, many different efforts, and I've not had the opportunity for a briefing yet, kind of on what we are doing and, and the status of things as they exist today, but I just want to ask two questions that are related to this but somewhat unrelated to each other, and that is, does this help bring to fruition the two sites that have been stalled because of either supply chain issues or building code issues, and I'm not even sure exactly what the status is there, but does this help that?
This helped at the front end of that, because we did rely on the shelter crisis to allow us to use the sleeping cabins, pallet shelters that are being deployed there. It also did help us, it helped, certainly helped my office and the procurement of the operator, and I believe it helped Mr. Gasway, he can speak to any specifics about that in his procurement of the contractors. So without this, we probably would have been in a different situation, certainly appreciate your questions about some of the delays, and happy to address those with Jeff if helpful.
So this was in place that helped bring that?
Yes.
But it wouldn't necessarily address the, the things that have stalled it along the way since then?
I want Mr. Gasway to say there's any specific things that are still sort of on his radar. From my perspective, we have used this to select the operator for this shelter.
Okay.
And they are underway, and one of the other great benefits is having them on board for the first shelter as well as the subsequent, they are now an integral part of our design teams, so that hopefully the subsequent shelters won't experience some of those same challenges that we've, we've experienced with the first one.
Okay, and real quick, second question before he comes to the microphone. I've had somebody approach me who would like to build a structure that would be individual living units, finished out and insulated, no kitchens, no bathrooms, that could be used as shelter, that then leased to the county, and at the expiration of the lease or some other alternative provided, the building could then be converted into storage units. Is that a solution that we would even entertain? I mean, I don't want to provide false hope, but I also don't want to go down a path where we get to the end and it was not fruitful.
Certainly, I mean, Mr. Gasway, I would add, I would say nothing is off the table at this point, and I'm always happy to speak to people like that. We did, despite not needing to do the procurement, DGS did just actually do an RFP to seek folks like what you're talking about, people who may be in the building trades, may have some sort of unique, unique product that they want to share. That has closed, but I think there'll be additional opportunities to reopen that, but on a one-off basis, either myself or Mr. Gasway would be happy, I think, to speak to that person.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to add anything?
Jeff Gasway, Director of General Services. To answer your question, Supervisor Hume, would the current declaration expedite some of those processes? It has already. It's just the getting the design and the permitting process to, you know, streamline and get that through permitting process to allow us to go to construction, that it's a little, I want to say slow, but it's, it's a process that we need to go through to get that permit to do construction.
And so, and I don't want to belabor this, but obviously, I think the intent behind this declaration is to try and get some bureaucracy out of the way so that we can, you know, bring things to bear more quickly, and so are those delays or are those hurdles self-imposed? Are they, are they coming from, from other agencies, and that's just kind of the course of business?
It's, I would say it's the course of business and, and the process that we need to go through. And I think the other piece, the key piece of this, that we had to go back to the drawing board on this, is Emily and I met with my staff, and we had a conceptual design for actually two of the safe stays that are currently in the process, and then we brought the provider on, and the provider had more expertise in running those types of operations and asked for some changes, and those changes did delay it some, and, you know, in getting it to the engineer, one of the sites right now is in permitting right now, we're hoping to have something back from them in the next three weeks, and then the other one is still in design, so.
Okay.
And it'll go to permitting, it's just one of the, the processes that we have to go through in order to get to construction.
Okay, thank you.
And I will say that everybody is on board, they realize these are high-profile projects, and they're expediting it to the best they can.
Okay. Would there be an opportunity at the back end to debrief on how we could even grease the skids? I mean, obviously, standing up these, these alternatives are really paramount importance to at least making a good faith effort towards providing solutions.
I would agree with that, and I think we're already learning as we're going.
Okay.
You know, we, we're working with a potential provider for the new site and including them in, in that process and programming and design, so we're, we're learning as we go, but yeah, I believe there would be a chance to debrief and, and look at lessons learned.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right. Thank you Supervisor Hume, thanks for the, for the questions. I thank you, Emily and Jeff, also for highlighting some specific illustrations of how this shelter crisis declaration has already helped open some things up, and also explaining that some of these delays are due to things, maybe changes in the, the best practice for the operation, but also didn't talk about some of the, kind of the bandwidth issues that we have with staffing, those are real, you know, we've got a lot of things moving right now, which is great, but I know that's required us to maybe table some other things, or possibly delay some other things, and, and I think, you know, Supervisor Hume's question about, you know, other models, other opportunities, other things that come up, I mean, as Emily knows, I ping her all the time, hey, what about this, what about this, and this location, what about, you know, I have been approached by developers, say, well, what if we did this, you know, temporarily, and then it turns into something else afterwards. I mean, I think we, like you said, I mean, we should always be looking at, at different opportunities, different ideas, so thank you for the, for the presentation, that's certainly helpful to me. Okay, any other comments from, I don't see any from board members, any public comment on this item?
We do not have any public comments, so I'm going to close them now.
Move the item.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Supervisor Serna, a second by Supervisor Hume. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Emily and Jeff. Okay, moving on to item 53.
Item 53 is the update on the proclamation of emergency for the 2022-23 winter storms and floods.
Thank you. No action on this item, but we look forward to hearing from you, Mary Jo, good morning, or good afternoon now.
Yes, good afternoon, and I don't know how to control this, because Jeff is so much taller than I am. Good afternoon, Chair Desmond and members of the board. My name is Mary Jo Flynn Evans, and I'm your Chief of Emergency Services, and if we could please start with the video that the Public Information Officers put together, and then followed by the slides that we've prepared.
You turn up the volume.
I'm going to ask Metro if they can, they're trying, okay, thank you. I'm going to ask Metro if they can, they're trying, okay, thank you.
When you're ready, if we could have the slides up, please. Thank you. And I selected the right button on this. The county's Office of Emergency Services and Emergency Operations Center has been open and activated since Wednesday, December 28th. We actually activated in advance of the New Year's Eve storms because our partnership with the National Weather Service, we were anticipating those large storms to come in. There is currently a local proclamation, as you're well aware, a state proclamation of emergency, along with a major disaster declaration by the President. The major disaster declaration has opened up funding for individual assistance, and individual assistance is for homeowners, renters, businesses, basically community members who need to access funding from the federal government. We are also undergoing and finalizing preliminary damage assessments. Those are being completed throughout the state, and we are hopeful that the results of that ends up being additional public assistance. And public assistance is for public infrastructure, public emergency response that has happened as a result of this disaster. Right now, the public assistance that is allowed and provided is for debris removal and emergency protective measures. Some of the areas that were impacted were Wilton, they were under several evacuation warnings and evacuation orders. All of those have since been lifted. Windstorms and heavy rains have impacted a broader swath of Sacramento County and really the state as a whole, and we experienced significant power outages and downed trees and branches. Some additional impacted areas include Point Pleasant, the Glenville tract, and Franklin Pond, Rancho Marietta, Herald and Dillard Road. All of these areas were under either evacuation warnings or evacuation orders was for Point Pleasant. Those have all been lifted as well. There's many challenges with the flooding that happens along the Kusumnus River and those communities who are adjacent to that river. It's a wild, natural river, and water levels can change quite suddenly. There's about four hours of notification time between gauge readings at Michigan Bar and impacts to the Wilton community. So when you're thinking holistically about the response that happened, that short duration of four hours is about our notification period for really drastic changes. We do have forecasts that we receive for the rivers that allow us to kind of see where things are going, and those can be very up and down and change very suddenly based on the water level that's coming. I did want to address some of the county's response. Just know that these numbers that you're seeing provided to you are already a couple days old. We are working on collecting additional data. I know that Rhodes has shared that they've had over 1,400 service requests that they've received so far, and with that, there's thousands of potholes. This is such a small number, it doesn't even do it justice for what they've received in terms of service requests. For every service request, there may be multiple potholes. And then we encourage residents who are still concerned about reported activities to use and contact 311 to report conditions, and then this information may change as we continue to gather additional data. Water resources, at the time this information was collected, had delivered over 84,000 sandbags and 1,300 tons of sand to sandbag locations. They had received more than 650 requests for calls to service through 311 and more than 85 staff involved in field storm response operations. The county had a pretty significant role in providing services for those who might be unsheltered during these storms. Homeless Services and Housing, Regional Parks, Behavioral Health had opened motel vouchers to allow people an opportunity to stay in a sheltered environment. That had a 350-person capacity. Park Rangers, Homeless Navigators, and Behavioral Health staff connected with people in flood areas along the Parkway to offer shelter and transportation to the shelters that were established. We opened the North A Shelter at 135-person capacity. Howe Community Park, sorry, Howe Park Community Center at a 50-person capacity. The Ethel Hart Senior Center had a 40-person capacity, and Cal Expo at 175-capacity. We activated 2-on-1, and their partnership has been absolutely wonderful in getting information to the community for callers who need additional information and also as a self-referral for weather respite shelters.
Mary Jo, Mary Jo, can I just stop you there for one sec? So I think it's really important to note on, as we were scrambling to open additional shelters, first of all, this doesn't include efforts, sheltering, additional sheltering efforts by the city of Sacramento as well.
Correct.
Correct, okay, so there were some additional, but in our discussions, I mean, it became very clear that we, no one was turned away for shelter. As the need expanded, we expanded the available shelter space. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. I just want to make that abundantly clear because sometimes you see things on social media and elsewhere where it mischaracterizes the situation, but I think you did an outstanding job identifying these locations and making sure we had the capacity, as well as the outreach, as well as the transportation resources for people.
And I just wanted to extend those thanks to the care and shelter team who really were instrumental in making sure those resources were available for the community.
Thank you.
Additional resources included Behavioral Health, who provided 45 clinicians and peers across the three shelters, who provided emotional support, crisis intervention, education, service and support, and really reconnecting individuals with their providers for follow-up. Regional Parks had more than 300 medium and large trees that fell within their respective properties. In addition to the trees, more than 100 large branches had fallen, and 40 park maintenance workers were involved in the cleanup efforts, putting more than 3,100 hours of service into this cleanup and removal, and also the work that they had done in advance of the storms, working with the community and notifying them of the potential for flooding dangers.
I'm going to interrupt you again, I'm sorry, Mary Jo, this is not a harbinger of things to come for the year, but with the cleanup, so now we're cleaning, I mean, I know that we were in the emergency response mode, out there trying to get people connected with services, get them out of the Parkway and out of some of the areas in our regional parks to get them to safety. You know, my office has certainly been, and I'm sure my colleagues share this, a lot of concern about a lot of the debris that's been left behind. It looks like it's either washed into some of the watershed, the river itself, or on the verge of washing in. Can you talk a little bit about some of those cleanup efforts? I mean, I'm assuming some of these areas are not even accessible yet because the ground is so saturated. Can you talk a little bit about that and provide some reassurance to the public that, yes, that is a priority of the counties to get to these areas and clean up that debris?
It absolutely is a priority of the counties. What we're working and focusing on right now are the life safety debris that we need to address, either blocking a public right of way, a tree that still has the potential to fall over, those kinds of things that could actually cause harm or danger. For additional debris that might be in the waterway, that is a challenge that we need to work through with FEMA on. There are some requirements for environmental, historical preservation, permitting and documents within waterways, and so we need to work with them on what is within that realm of federal responsibility and what will be just, excuse me, the county's responsibility without that federal assistance. So we're going to take those next steps with the FEMA teams that are here within the county and make sure that we have an opportunity to study those areas and the need, and then formulate a plan for cleanup of that.
So if I hear from members in the community that are in a county, regional park, and they say, hey, there's a bunch of debris, abandoned camp, it's just, it's just trash and it's on the verge of washing in, can they report these things on 311? Is there, does it have the mechanism to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
We can receive those reports from 311 into the Emergency Operations Center.
Okay.
And start to gather that data.
Thank you.
And that data is helpful in addressing some of these concerns with the FEMA teams that are on the ground and helping us, sorry, take a look at the damages and hopefully promote and build into the President's Declaration some funding for, we call it Categories A through G. Categories A and B are disaster debris removal, so those life safety debris removal, and then Category B is emergency protective measures. Category C through G is everything from roads and bridges, water facilities, parks, basically public facilities, just in general, public facilities. All of those categories currently have not received approval for funding, so that permanent work, that additional debris removal, has not yet been funded by the federal government or promised funding. So the steps that are taking place right now are to assess the damages. Those preliminary damage assessments have taken place this last week within Sacramento County, but it is going to continue throughout our neighboring jurisdictions within the state, compiled together at the state level and presented to the public, to the President in hopes of expanding those categories of funding.
So hopefully, the debris removal efforts along the Parkway and along a lot of our, you know, urban creeks and along the regional parks ultimately will be reimbursed, those efforts will be reimbursable.
We're hopeful for that, but again, there is a process to work through for FEMA, so I don't want to overpromise, but we will work through that process and bring you back what those solutions may be, but ultimately, the county may be responsible for some element of it.
And Chair, if I may, Dave DeFonte, Deputy County Exec, Community Services. Some of those efforts are already underway. We're working with volunteer crews to start cleaning up areas right now. Last I heard yesterday in talking with Liz Bellis, our Parks Director, volunteer groups have already cleaned up 20,000 pounds of trash just north of downtown here at the Two Rivers Trail, and we're partnering with them and obviously using Forensic Clean and other crews as well to start those efforts. Obviously, we hope that they are to be reimbursed in the future, but we know those are things that we're going to have to take care of, and we're already on our way, having, you know, still transitioning from addressing those life safety issues as obviously the most paramount thing that we're focused on, but working on trash cleanup as well. So rest assured, those efforts are underway and will continue.
Thanks, Dave.
So this slide is just some of our emergency response partners, some of whom provided mutual aid assistance into our Emergency Operations Center. A number of others were working with the community directly where they were impacted, either at the shelters or just in different help around the county. So I did want to recognize and thank all of those partners. Some of the next steps for the community, there is a recovery website that has been established to connect residents to FEMA, to connect them to state services and any county services that may be available to them. At the Disaster Recovery Center, which is in Galt, and actually on my next slide, they can also get these services in person through February 1st. But our web address at SacCounty.gov will lead you to our page for emergency response, or individuals can directly access that at SacOES.org.
All right, Mary Jo, Supervisor Hume has a question?
Yes.
Oh, at the end of the presentation, okay.
So back to the Disaster Recovery Center. That facility is going to be open through Wednesday, February 1st, in the city of Galt. Galt is gracious in hosting that center. I know Galt and Elk Grove have been instrumental in offering their facilities and resources, and I'd like to thank them for that. This Disaster Recovery Center is available to any county resident who experienced damages or disaster and needs to work with FEMA or the state representatives and county representatives who are there. If they can't access that, all these resources are available on that online portal that I had just mentioned, and after February 1st, that online portal will remain available to anyone who needs those continued services. And that concludes my remarks. If there's any questions.
Okay, we do, we have Supervisor Hume, then Supervisor Frost.
Thank you, Chair. You know, I first just want to say, Mary Jo, it's, natural disaster is one of those situations where you kind of have to just thin slice and cut through all the baloney and get right down to who are you and how are we doing and what's going on, and so it's been a very compressed getting-to-know-you phase, but I've appreciated that because I think your demeanor and your general outlook and how you approach your work, obviously very high-stress situation, dealing with a lot of different moving parts, moving departments, and yet even when the Chair and I came and toured the EOC, and granted, it was not at the height, which we would never want to distract you, so good thing, but you were probably still very weary and very, you know, tired from the expenditure of energy that had happened recently, and yet you still were very gracious, and I appreciated you coming out when we had the tour of some of the damages along the Kusumnus. And so I just want to say both to Deputy Executive DeFonte and yourself, just, I really appreciate, as well as Alicia, who's not here anymore, but really appreciate you guys taking the time to come out and do that, and I just appreciate all of those partners that you listed on that slide that tried to make this, you know, as painless as possible for the folks that are trying to get help and trying to get through things, and, you know, unfortunately, I think we all realize that we're going to have to deal with this again soon, we don't know when, but it just, it's been a pleasure to witness the steadfast effort that the county made, and even at times where, you know, tensions are high and everybody's something of an armchair quarterback, and so some of the communications were not appreciated, some of the orders were not appreciated, but I think that what the county did was essentially issue warnings, like, hey, you may be safe where you are and you're not going to die from this event, but you have livestock to worry about, you have equipment to worry about. If you want to get things out of where you are, you might want to do it now, and if you're in a situation, because either you don't have food, water, you need medical help, or whatever else, you're on certain devices, help will not be able to reach you soon. And so sometimes I think when an evacuation order is issued, it's not necessarily to say you're an immediate threat of life, but that life is going to get very complicated and difficult, and to the extent that you can make it easier on yourself, you should. And I'll say this, that one of the most eye-opening things, and I didn't realize how prophetic it was, but at SAFCA, having my briefing there, and the first image put up on the screen was a gentleman post-Katrina in waist-deep water, you know, pushing a laundry basket full of stuff, and he was told, this is 70-something degree water. This does not happen in a flood event in the Sacramento area because that's 40-something degree water, and that person is going to die of hypothermia if they're left to that exposure. And so seeing that picture of the person where the water is nearly cresting the roof of their car, you know, things can go south very quickly, and so I just hope that the public recognizes that and realizes that, you know, turn around, don't drown, much like what we deal with with railroad tracks, it's take these threats seriously. But I just wanted to express that, both what a pleasure it's been to see you in action, the work that the county has done with the help of our partners, and then finally, the last thing I'll say is the communication relative to, if you need assistance, here's what we have available, and standing up that relief center down at Chabola, you know, I've appreciated being able to share that information and get that out to folks who, you know, oftentimes don't know where to turn and how to turn, and at least connecting them with somebody that if not is able to provide immediate assistance, can start to point them in the right direction to get their life back on track. And so, again, I just generally, kudos to the team, and I wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume. Supervisor Frost?
I want to echo what he said, and I won't take the time to say it all, but I feel every part of it and appreciate the tour and appreciate your and all the hard work of everyone through all of this, and I know there were people out 24/7. I heard from Transportation, I heard from several departments, it's heard from several departments. It's, it was monumental. I wanted to ask you, is it possible to obtain a link to the video to share that with our constituents? Because I might, I think it might give them, you know, we're getting calls about the potholes, and they're deeper than they've ever been. They're worse than they've ever been, and it's not easy to respond to everything, and we want to send a message out that, you know, give them an idea of what we're catching up with. If it's possible, we'd love to share that on our media pages. And I also wanted to ask, and I don't know if this is for you or for Ron Vicari regarding the sinkholes. When I think of sinkholes, I think of Florida. I don't think of California, but I didn't know we had sinkholes here. And I wondered if someone could describe that those situations with the sinkholes.
I'm going to leave that to the experts.
Were they involving properties, or were they out in the middle of fields?
Ron Vicari, Director of Transportation, the sinkholes that, or what you're referring to was primarily washouts at culverts, basically culverts that we have that go underneath our roadways that just couldn't handle the flows that we, that we were seeing. And so we have, you know, certainly we're out there, a lot of our roadways sat underwater for a substantial amount of time. So we're, you know, still evaluating everywhere to find out, you know, exactly what the damage is. I think just to kind of point people to kind of clear up one thing, one of the slides showed a really low number of potholes, for instance. Excuse me. We've filled 13,000 potholes since New Year's Eve. We are continuing, and that we're going after the worst of the worst, right? We, you know, we fully anticipate that, you know, we'll have an additional, we generally do 70,000 potholes unfortunately a year. We know that that, in our minds, that's going to at least double. We've just, our roads have been sitting under saturated conditions for a long time. You see it when you drive throughout the county. And just to clarify one other thing, too, because I think it's important, you mentioned your constituents talking about, from a transportation standpoint, the trees that, that we've, you know, gone in to address the safety issues. We've moved them to the side of the road, we've coned them off, and a lot of constituents are asking now, when are you going to come get those? So we're to 330 trees left to clean up out of our 680 that fell. And, and our goal is certainly within, by the end of February to get after all those. That's what our goal is, but we are, we will continuously go after those until we finish the job. So we will get to those as soon as possible, and hopefully by the end of February.
So is it reasonable to assume that some of those roads that were underwater could settle more as time goes by? We won't know the, I mean, it'll take a little bit of time to know.
Certainly, we, you know, we still have three roads that are closed that are still underwater, right? So we, we're not out of that yet. We have many, we know that there'll be an extensive amount of damage at our bridges. Some of the flows are so high that we can't even evaluate those yet, because the water hasn't gone down to a point that we can evaluate the damage there. So yes, there's, you know, we know that our damage is in the tens of millions of dollars, unfortunately, and we are continuing to evaluate it as we can, and we're continuing. Our crews are still working on, you know, anything that we can do to get roads opened and things safe for the public to use, but we continue to come across more things that need attention.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you, Supervisor Frost. Great, great suggestion, because I think having that information to get out there, put out there to our constituents to really make sure they understand the scope of this and how much work still needs to be done and how much work you've already done, especially on the DOT side, that's, that'd be valuable for me, too, both a link to the video and some of these numbers. I mean, the communication was great, kind of when we were in the thick of the storm, but I think now to continue that communication for us to be able to push out.
Yeah, I don't want to create work, but if you do have pictures of potholes that you can include with it, it would, because they're going to email us back and say,
Yeah.
you didn't mention the potholes. So, yeah, thank you.
I reported three of them this morning on 3-1-1. Ron, I want you to know that. Well, Mary, I don't see any other comments from Supervisors, but I, just let me add my thanks to the chorus here for the work that you did and all of the county staff did. I know Siobhan and Emily were there, working so hard to get shelter for, for the homeless population, and really, you know, some tough times, tough conversations, and dealing with some of our other municipal partners in the region, but really a great job. And I just so much appreciate your efforts, and I know there were a lot of, a lot of late nights, a lot of people there overnight and dealing with some of these, some of these problems. So, so thank you, all of you. And David, yes, you had some comments.
Yes, thank you Supervisor Desmond. I did want to extend appreciation for Mary Jo. She was, she spent many of, a long time at the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center. She had a cot in her office in which she slept in her office as she took care of things. But not only her and her team, her mighty team of, I think, six or seven folks on her team, but her collaboration and coordination with all our partners and all the other folks that were in the county. But not only the folks that were working in the EOC, and many of them are responding from the Galt and from the Herald area, where they had floods and they were still responding to the EOC to take care of the constituents of Sacramento County, we're very proud of the work that they did and them stepping up and helping us on that. I know at least one, several directors that are actually from the Wilton area that had to make decisions to come into the office or protect their home, and they came into the office to do the larger, the larger piece of it. But in addition to those folks responding to the EOC and responding to the storm, that we also had many employees continue to work to keep the lights on. So we had a lot of folks diverted, so we truly appreciate the work that those folks that keep the lights on. And, and just on behalf of County Executive Ann Edwards and her executive team that sits here behind me, we just want to personally thank all county employees and our partners that truly stepped up to help us do this, and wish we could shake everybody's hand, but we should all be very proud of the team that we have in Sacramento County and the efforts that they brought forward on this storm. And I know we are all proud and want to say thank you to those, that team. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, David. I know, Mary Jo, most of us hope to avoid in these emergencies, but I know you live for this. So I hope we don't have to see you too often here in the chambers presenting to us.
I do have to say, I enjoy my job and I'm grateful to be here, but one of the wonderful things is to be able to help the community during a crisis. And, and it's not just me, it is the county's team holistically. And when I say county, I mean all the moving and different pieces and parts within the county coming together as well. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mary Jo. Okay, well, that, no action required on that item. Any public comment?
We do not. Now close the public comments.
Okay, then we'll move on to item 54.
All right. So, item 54, this is a continuation from the last meeting on your own ranks appointments, and so we're going to really focus on the ones that are highlighted. If there's anything here that you want to talk about or make changes, feel free to interrupt me. Okay, so first on the Area for Agency on Aging Governing Board, and I believe we were coming back to see if you wanted to designate a, an alternate. Mr. Hume?
Yes, I'd like to.
Excuse me, I'd like to designate my Chief of Staff, Rebecca Sloan.
Okay. And then on the Cal ID RAN Board, what are we doing here as far as your alternate?
That's a good question. We're going to write it out for right now and learn more about the actual board and how often they meet, and so I've got a briefing scheduled, but nothing imminent.
Okay, so we'll leave that vacant?
Well, you can just put me down for now.
Yeah, we'll have you in there as the member, but we'll leave your alternate seat vacant. If we jump down to the Lower American River Conservancy Program Advisory, we were looking for the designee.
And I believe that would also be Rebecca Sloan?
Okay. I will add her on there. Let me just make sure, yeah, that one doesn't have any restrictions. Let's move on to SAFCA.
I'll, I'll go ahead and take that one.
Okay, and do you want to list Ms. Sloan as your alternate?
Sure.
Okay, we will add her. Confirms that. Okay, let's move down to the Sacramento County California Capitol Air Show Board of Directors. This was not on your own ranks, and we have since added that because you do have seats that you designate. So I will ask the Chair who he wants to.
Well, I had someone, I was thinking, maybe I can just designate Ms. Sloan for this one as well, but no. I'd like to nominate Felipe Fuentes.
Okay.
I could hear groaning coming from the second floor of certain particularity.
All right, we will make that change, and that's a two-year rotation. Obviously, this board could make a change at any point in time. The Sacramento County Community Corrections Partnership, we are adding Mr. Hume to that. So we also added the CCP Board on here. This was not on here the last time, I don't believe, and so we added that. So you're automatically on that board, and so we're just going to memorialize that. And then if we go down to the Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission, would you like to nominate Ms. Sloan to be your alternate? Thank you. All right, two more to go. Sacramento Public Library Authority, would, do you have an alternate? And this would need to be an elected official.
I do. Folsom Cordova School District Trustee Jen Larrett.
Okay. I'll make sure we add her. Thank you for that. And then the Sacramento San Joaquin Delta Conservancy, your alternate. Right now, we have Don Thomas.
Excuse me, Flo, I mean, I see District 4 also has an alternate to, on the library.
Yes, I wanted to remove Assemblyman Josh Hoover. Will no longer be able to serve, and I'm still looking for an alternate.
Okay, we will vacate that seat. And when you find someone, you could just notify the Clerk's Office, and we'll take care of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, San Joaquin Delta Conservancy.
I'll go ahead and keep myself on there, and you could list Ms. Sloan as alternate. Is that correct?
Okay, so right now, we have Don Thomas on here. So you want to?
No, I'd like to keep Mr. Thomas, then.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then...
Apologize, I don't have the paperwork in front of me.
Oh, okay.
And Ms. Sloan, thank you. Yes, she does. I could hear the groaning being retracted from the second floor.
Okay. I'm so sorry. I wish I would have known. I could have given you my copy, and I would have went online. Okay, so we are done, then. I think you wanted to think about that and confer with her, so we're done as far as that is concerned. Any other items that I missed? No changes? Okay. If we could quickly get through item 55, I know you guys have things to do. You do have a lot of items to consider today. So you're continuing to February 7th, the Sacramento County Mental Health Board, February 28th, the Elk Grove Casumnes Cemetery District, you're continuing to March 14th, Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, Assessment Appeals Board, Building Board of Appeals, Cemetery Advisory Commission, Children's Coalition, County Service Area 4C Delta, In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council, Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Behavior Health Youth Advisory Board, the Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And for your matters today, first up is Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Desmond?
Please continue to March 14th.
And Mr. Hume?
Continue to February 28th, or March 14th.
Oh, you want to do March 14th?
Might as well do them on the same day, sure.
Okay, not a problem. That gives you a little more time. Make sure I didn't leave anyone out. Casumnes Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Frost?
Please nominate Jim Crowder and continue open seat to the future.
I'll just put you out to the furthest date on March 14th. Thank you. Mr. Hume?
I will continue mine to March 14th as well.
Thank you. County Planning Commission Supervisor Kennedy?
Please reappoint Genevieve Wong and waive the process.
Second.
Thank you.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And then Ms. Frost?
Are we on the County Planning Commission?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I would like to nominate Justin Rathell, please, and waive the process due to potential quorum issue.
Second.
Unanimous vote. And then Supervisor Hume, what would you like to do?
Well, I have no idea what the process is, but I'd like to nominate Joe Phil Borha and waive the process.
Second.
Okay. See, Chair, I pick up quick.
Nice. I was a much slower learner than you.
Awesome. Now we have a completed board, so that's a unanimous vote. County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Casumnes. Mr. Hume?
I believe I am continuing that to, let's go ahead and make it the 3-14 meeting as well.
Got it. Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council.
Same thing, we'll continue that to 3-14.
Thank you. Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council.
The Chiefs recommend reappointing Maureen Fitzgerald and continue the remainder to March 14th.
Okay. And moving on to the Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee.
Continue to March 14th.
Local Child Care Planning and Development Council.
Continue to February 28th.
North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council. We'll start with Supervisor Serna.
I don't have any notes on that.
Okay. My notes from the Chief are recommending to continue yours to March 14th. Are you okay with that?
That's fine.
Thank you. And then Supervisor Desmond?
I'll continue mine to March 14th as well.
Okay, we'll make that change for you. And that's it. On to the Public Health Advisory Board. Mr. Desmond?
Chiefs recommend continuing to March 14th.
Recreation and Park Commission. We'll start with Supervisor Serna.
Again, no notes.
Okay, so your chief is recommending the nomination of Christopher Schultz.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and nominate him and continue the appointment to the next meeting. Supervisor Kennedy?
Reappoint Rebecca Hers.
Okay, and we will do the same thing, so they'll be appointed at your next meeting. Thank you for that. Let me make sure I didn't skip anyone. I'm moving a little fast. And then Supervisor Hume?
Continue to the March 14th meeting, please.
Okay. Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board. Mr. Desmond?
Continue to February 28th.
Thank you. And then we have the Sacramento County Youth Commission. We'll start with Supervisor Serna. Your chief is recommending to continue to February 28th. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Thank you. And then Supervisor Kennedy?
Appoint Sanae Lanice Coram Robertson.
And continue the remainder to February 28th?
Correct. Thank you.
And then we're now, Mr. Desmond?
Continue to March 14th.
And then Mr. Hume?
This is the Youth Commission, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I would like to nominate the following individuals, please. Allison Flowers, Celine Chin, and Joyce Lynn.
Okay, so we'll nominate them today, and then they will be appointed at your next meeting.
Great.
All righty. So all of yours are filled. So moving on to the Veterans Advisory Commission. We'll start with Supervisor Serna. Would you be okay with continuing to February 28th?
I would.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
Continue to February 28th.
All right. And last one is the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. We'll start with Supervisor Kennedy.
Continue to February 28th.
And Mr. Hume?
I'm going to ask to go to the 14th, since all of my others are on the 14th.
Okay. And that concludes your nominations. So next will be County Executive Comments.
Okay. Thank you. I'll turn to David, filling in for our County Exec.
I am filling in, thank you. No comments, just expect your County Executive to be back on February 7th for the next meeting, and thank you for the opportunity and patience for today.
Okay. Thank you, David. Okay, next, I'll turn to my colleagues for any comments. Seeing none, thank you. Okay, well, we will then adjourn the public meeting. So for closed session, just make sure I have it right. We are meeting in hearing room number one, and then we're coming back into chambers for a closed session, and then we go upstairs for closed session. Is that correct?
Correct.
I have it right. So we'll be getting our steps in.
Mr. Chairperson, I do apologize to the board. I did not realize there was a public comment for nominations, so...
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not ask you that. I apologize.
Yeah, and I didn't look up, so I was, I do apologize. So I'm going to ask Darrell to transfer that caller, please. Ms. Darrell, would you mind transferring that caller? Thank you. Hi caller, I'm so sorry. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes. sorry. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes. Caller, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, go, please start with your comments. Thank you. You have two minutes.
It's a moot point now, since the vote was taken before a public comment was able to be given. And here's my question. The open filing for the County Planning Commission was stated as last Monday through the 31st of January. But as we see, the filing was no longer available as of yesterday, to which I had planned to apply. My question is, when a filing period is established, is there not a notice given when the drawback of that open applying time occurs for folks who may want to apply for the, whatever Planning Commission and/or whatever Commission or Board see a filing period, and then yet the filing period is reduced without any type of notification to the general public? There isn't a city, excuse me, county code that prevents arbitrarily just circumventing the scheduled time? Thank you for your time.
Hi, are you still on the line, sir?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I'm going to find a way to get your contact information. A lot of the information, our advertisements and what our vacant seats are, are listed on the Clerk of the Board's website under Boards and Commissions. And we also do advertise when seats are opened and the filing dates are closed. And so this was properly noticed. And so I'll have to get back to you so that I can give you more information. And someone from my office would be able to walk you through that process, so you would be able to follow some of the future openings.
Oh, that would be no problem. I didn't see any notification of the closing of the filing. It, again, it opened last Monday, and that was the last I saw.
Yeah, so we don't have any electronic notifications, but if you could email the board clerk at SacCounty.gov, someone from my office will go back to you right away.
Okay, thank you, caller. So with that, we will adjourn public hearing and reconvene in closed session. And I'm going to have, we'll do that in 10 minutes. Come back in 10 minutes. Give ourselves a few minutes before we come back into the hearing room one for closed session.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
You have your pictures.